Okay, it is Thursday, June 22nd, 2017. This is the Situate Planning Board meeting. We have a posted agenda. Do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First up, public hearing, accessory dwelling permit, special permit, 33 Barker Road. And seeing as this is a special permit, you'll need four out of four here tonight because Mr. Morristone won't be joining us tonight. Okay?
Great. Thank you. For the record, my name's Gregory Morris. I'm a registered engineer for Morris Engineering, representing Ann Corbo, the applicant, and her mother Kathleen Corbo, who's the property owner. This is a request for an accessory dwelling permit in accordance with Section 830.2 of the bylaw. The Corbos both reside at this property right now. The property's at the corner of Hillcrest Road and Barker Road. The main objective here is to construct the accessory dwelling and move the mother Kathleen Corbo into that accessory dwelling. The house, as it sits today, is a five-bedroom house. We would be changing the house into a four-bedroom house and then placing that additional fifth bedroom, moving that over into the accessory area. The addition that we've laid out is 748 square feet in size. The bylaw allows up to a maximum of 750 square feet, so we demonstrate compliance with that. The existing house itself is non-conforming with respect to zoning, with respect to the side yard and the rear yard setbacks, also with respect to the lot area. This went to the Zoning Board of Appeals and received unanimous approval the last week of that board. Because with this addition, we're increasing the floor area more than 20 percent of the gross floor area, no one in the audience spoke up in objection to this project at the time. As part of the special permit, we reviewed the parking. You're required to have two parking spaces for the house and two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling. The layout that you see on the plan there is the existing driveway. Again, we're not adding any bedrooms. We're not adding any new people to this property. That's where they park. There is room there for four cars, albeit the existing driveway uses a portion of the right-of-way. That's how it's existed since this house has been occupied by the Corbos. I'd turn it over for any questions or comments. I did bring copies of the architectural plans as well. I think you have copies of those. I can go through those if you'd like.
Laura?
There were just a couple of things that came up in connection with this. One was from the health agent, the health director, that there isn't any documentation for the septic system at the Board of Health, and there's a concern that they don't know what kind of system it has, how big it is. They are adding a bedroom. They don't have enough information to know, is it four-bedroom now? Is it five-bedroom now? So that's one of the things that I think needs to be figured out. The only other thing that's a little bit of an issue is the parking seems a little on the tight side. You know, you've got, I believe it's, you know, two cars stacked, which if you ever had someone else living there that wasn't a family member, it would be a little bit tight. You might want to get another space shown on the plan somewhere. You know, and the whole property is actually a little bit on the tight side for this. You're right up against the eight-foot setback on one side. On the other side, it's like a two-foot setback. So it's tight, but it looks like it'll look good as far as the architecture and, you know, maybe we cannot live without those other issues. Except I think that septic system has to be resolved.
And what do we know about the city? So do we have no additional information on the septic system?
She didn't have any information. Some of the files down there are not easy to find, and I'm assuming that's what happened with this one.
If I may, I met, the applicant and myself, we met with Jennifer Keefe, the Board of Health agent, and discussed this project in specifics because that was one of our questions going in here. This house is serviced right now by a cesspool. The cesspool is located on the east side of the house on Barker Road. The Title V requirements and the Situate Board of Health requirements in a scenario like this are that you perform an inspection to verify the structural integrity of the system and to verify that the proposed addition would meet the setbacks to it. There's a 20-foot setback from a cesspool to a foundation. I haven't submitted a report to the Board of Health yet, but this certainly will meet passing Title V requirements for that. This is not what's referred to as new construction in Title V either. We're not adding any bedrooms to the house. We're removing a bedroom from the existing house. We're adding the bedroom in the accessory dwelling, so it's a net of zero. Again, it only triggers an inspection to identify the location of the cesspool and to verify that we comply with the setbacks to it, which we do.
So you don't have to have the cesspool tested at all?
It's not required to-
Dimensional?
It's only required to pass the setback from the foundation to the cesspool. It's not required to pass a full Title V inspection, which it may or may not. There is sewer available on Barker Road. They could potentially tie into that at that point.
I think that's one of the things that we're looking at, is the infrastructure adequate to incorporate an accessory dwelling? So the answer we have is, we don't really know?
The answer you have is yes, it is adequate. The reason I say that is because Title V flows for an accessory dwelling or for a house are based off of the number of bedrooms. Without a number of bedrooms increasing, you're not adding any flow to the septic system. This services five bedrooms right now. It'll service five bedrooms when the project is complete.
So by definition, it passes?
Correct.
And then the question on that, like, right on the plans where you have on the primary dwelling, the home office, that used to be a bedroom, and so you're removing the casing?
Removing the doors to that so that you eliminate the privacy.
Where's that?
Correct. Widening on the second floor.
So they're removing a door here that used to be the bedroom?
Is that room where the door is taken out?
Yeah, you take the door out and you widen the entrance to 60 inches to eliminate the privacy. Correct.
I have a question.
Yes, Ann.
All right. I see in the accessory apartment that there's a six-foot slider. Where is the other access egress?
Sure. Right now, the access and egress to the primary dwelling is on the front of the property. The second one is going to be right here at the front as well, the first floor plan.
Did you pass it?
No. Shows the front deck and the porch with the access into the existing house. There's access there as well into the accessory dwelling.
All right, so this access into the dining room, is that what I'm saying?
Right here and right here.
Into the sitting area?
Into the sitting area and into the kitchen.
Okay.
The door opens up, it says cubbies. Then there's a stairway, a sitting area.
Closet. And then you have the door going into the dining in the main house. At least that's-
No, that's a closet.
That's a closet from the main house. This blue line here represents the party wall or the partition wall. There's no connection between the two units. They are individual units.
All right, so then, if that's the case, then I'm confused. Because I see the slider going into the kitchen area, and then that DN with the arrow going to the covered porch.
Yeah. You're stepping down onto the porch.
You're stepping down onto the porch, and then if you bang a left, you've got down and down with a door, it appears to be a door, that's going into the dining room.
Of the main house.
Of the main house.
Yeah. It's the main house entrance.
All right. And then there's another entrance, the porch goes into the living room, or how does that work?
This goes straight into the dining room.
Right. I see that.
For the main dwelling.
Yes.
There's another access off of Barker Road with a door into the porch on Barker Road.
Which enters into the living room?
There's no doorway.
I think you might be missing a door there.
Yeah, you're missing a door.
Yeah, I'll bring that up to the architect. There's access from that porch into the dwelling.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Thanks.
And the access from the slider onto the deck, is there access off the deck?
There is, there's a step off of the deck.
So, oh, this is low. This is like at ground level then, the deck?
So the front elevation's here. You see the slider here, this is the accessory. In fact, from my pen to the right is primarily the existing house, my pen to the left being the accessory. There's the slider with a deck in front of it. You know, it's a foot 18 inches off grade. It's a relatively flat site.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Since Ann brought it up, what are the regulations? Do they, the two egress points have to be a certain distance apart?
I'm not familiar with what that is. I know that you're required to have two. I do know that.
You know, and everything down in that neck of the woods is pretty tight to begin with. Everybody's sort of, it's a beachy type of area. So, you know, it's, the setbacks are the setbacks. I don't really have a problem with this.
Another question, just a clarification. On the plan that I'm looking at, you've got a dotted line that says building envelope?
Yeah.
What exactly is that?
Sure, so the building envelope represents the zoning setbacks. Would be a 30-foot setback from the front and eight-foot setback from the sides and then 20 from that interior corner.
So that's why it's saying, yeah, it's eight foot four. Oh, and it, okay, okay, now I get-
Eight foot's required, we're proposing it at eight foot four.
Four, okay, got it, got it.
The septic system is to the east of the building?
Yeah, it's located approximately right here.
Down below the dimension again.
So does the accessory dwelling have a separate deed into the septic system?
The plumbing would tie into the plumbing in the primary house in the foundation or in the basement area and go out to the cesspool.
And what about water?
Water would be tied in inside the-
A separate water meter for it?
You'd, if the water department requires it, you'd do a sub-meter. It's not a separate tap out into the street, no.
As a water department, all right, look at this.
The DPW gets copies of them. We don't usually have a separate copy for the water department, but it's kind of an ongoing situation that they should know about. I mean, I think at one point, they were trying to get everyone to put in a separate water meter, but that just wasn't practical, and it's also expensive for the homeowner.
It's $5,000.
$6,500.
Oh, my goodness, it went up.
Yeah.
Huh. It had to go up because the water that's going through it went up.
And is the, you can't really tell from the elevation views here, but is all the finish on the new stuff the same as the old stuff? Are there differences here?
They're going to try to match the finishes, is the goal. What's on there right now is a vinyl clapboard. I'm going to try to match that.
But if I remember right, the parking is loosely defined on the curb.
Loosely defined, yeah. I mean, it's a gravel driveway that exists right now. Hillcrest Road, that location, is a gravel street as well, so.
Is there room for additional parking space there?
You could widen that driveway and certainly put additional parking in. The number of occupants that are there today is the same number of occupants that will be there in this scenario. It's the mother, daughter, and the children.
Yeah, I understand that, except that, you know, if they sell the house or something, anything can happen, right? So I guess the only thing I wouldn't want to do is somehow codify the fact that your parking spaces are running into the town right of way or whatever.
Sure.
I think I'd be more comfortable if they can find at least another parking space here.
So what?
You could push that back, though, couldn't you? Couldn't you push the parking back?
They've got them.
It seems like there's room.
Most likely, you'd be looking at widening the driveway, is what you would do, and we could certainly accommodate that.
If Greg were just to show it on a plan, then, you know, you'd have it, you'd know that it could be done if the scenario ever changed.
Well, I think I'd like to see it on the plan because I don't want to convey the notion in this special permit that this is somehow a taking of the easement or we're agreeing that, you know, if the town were to come and try to use this space and they ended up with two parking spaces, we don't want people parking on the street, right?
Yeah.
Is there a curb there? Is there a curb cut, or is this just-
No, it's a gravel.
No, it's gravel.
So you could easily widen it. You wouldn't have to do a curb cut or anything?
You could. It's all lawn along the front of this house, so I mean, you could just remove some of that.
Okay. Other questions?
No. The only thing I would say is that we have agreement from the Board of Health, but otherwise it all looks pretty good, except for the parking. If you wanted to show that on the plan, I would agree to that.
I'd like to see the parking on the plan.
Yep.
I'd also like to make sure we affirmatively state that this is a four-bedroom house and the home office doesn't become another bedroom, you know, six months later.
Sure. So in my discussions with the Board of Health, we talked about placing a deed restriction on the property, so that would be reported, yeah.
But we'll put it in the special permit that if it were to change, we can revoke the special permit too.
Sure. It would be a change.
And the Board of Health, you talked to the Board of Health about the septic system?
Yes, I have.
And where do they stand on it?
They want me to submit a sketch of what's out there for the system with dimensions and show that we comply with the 20-foot setback, which I will certify that we do comply with those setbacks. I just haven't turned that document in yet.
And I think I asked this before, but if you could humor me again, the difference between a cesspool and a septic is what?
Sure. So a cesspool, this house is an old house. I believe it was constructed in 1895. Back then, it was common to have a cesspool, which is essentially a pit, and it's a porous pit. Typically, they're made out of field stone or concrete block. All of the wastewater of this house, including all of the solids, go out to that pit. It services both to trap that, it also services in a limited capacity of leaching.
So it doesn't really have a leaching field like a typical septic system?
Correct. Doesn't have a separate leaching system.
Okay.
And did they consider connecting it to town sewer?
That was brought into consideration. Financially, the goal right now is to get the accessory dwelling constructed. The septic is serving the capacity of the house right now. Eventually, down the road, most likely, this property will be tied into town sewer. It comes at great expense, though.
It's another $20,000.
But we really don't know the performance of the cesspool.
Maybe more, it's got plenty of two streets.
All we know is it's not running above ground.
It's going to pass Title V's requirements for what we're proposing. We know that.
In terms of performance? If this is new construction, you'd never be able to do that.
This is not considered new construction.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, correct. If this was new construction-
And it may not actually be performing very well as a septic system.
Correct.
All right.
Questions from the public?
Yeah, it's, thank you, sir. Any questions from the public on this? It seems like we have quite a crowd, but let's not be for this. Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
I'll read it. I move to make the following findings a fact. On May 4th, 2017, Ann and Kathleen Corbo applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling proposed to be attached to a single-family home at 33 Barker Road. Two, based on the application, the interior floor space of the proposed accessory dwelling will be 748 square feet. This is less than the maximum of the 750 square feet allowed by the zoning bylaw. The accessory dwelling meets the size requirements of Section 530.2F. Three, the side setback of the existing house is less than five feet and is non-conforming. A special permit to allow expansion was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 15th, 2017. Four, according to the town of Situate assessor's field card, the existing house has a net area of 1,718 square feet and five bedrooms. The proposed accessory dwelling plan dated 3/31/17 shows four outside parking spaces. Two spaces are across the property line but appear to be off the street. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and sufficient parking for the primary dwelling. The owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will live on the property. The primary dwelling and the accessory dwelling will be serviced by a septic system. Should we say cesspool as opposed to, well, it's a septic system.
You can, I think you can maybe just leave that out.
All right. All right. The accessory dwelling will have one bedroom and the primary dwelling will have four bedrooms. The adequacy of the septic system for the number of bedrooms must be determined by the Board of Health. Seven, there are two means of egress, a door to the deck and a slider to the outside. Eight, the application meets the standards of the zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit.
So maybe you want to-
Maybe we're going to reword it.
Only one question on that was the parking.
I wrote that before you just had the discussion that you had. Maybe you want to just pitch that one?
Change the statement of finding a fact on the parking?
Yeah, maybe you don't want to have a finding a fact about parking.
What, can you repeat what we said there, Ann?
Two spaces are across the property line but appear to be off the street. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and sufficient parking for the primary dwelling.
So I think we should say with the-
Something to affect an expansion area.
Yeah, there's an expansion area to allow for two additional parking spaces.
Would you not put that in the-
Well, I just don't want to, I don't want to codify the notion that those two that go into the town right of way are allowable. Yeah, we're saying there may be some grandfathering that's happening there, but if the town comes along and says we're putting something there, they're going to lose those parking spaces, right?
So how do you want to reword this?
Well, do we have it in the actual motion?
Yes.
So we could, we could say that there was two spaces available? Just leave it at that?
I would say, turn and say that there are four spaces currently being provided, serving the house, two of which are into the town right of way. Then you can come back up and correct that.
Yeah, we can correct that in the decision.
In the decision.
Okay.
That makes sense. Did you get that?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, with that modification.
Do we have to have a motion on that of findings of fact?
With findings of fact is modified. Laura is presenting.
I second.
Is there a favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at 33 Barker Road with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for the accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on 12/17/15. Except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled Proposed Accessory Dwelling Plan, 33 Barker Road, Situate, Mass., by Morris Engineering, dated 3/31/16, revised 5/2/17, and elevations and floor plans, including drawings. A1 dot 1, Proposed First Floor Plan, Proposed Second Floor Plan, Proposed South Elevation and East Elevation by HC Design and dated 25 August 2016, March 10, 2017, and April 25, 2017. The number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. The number of bedrooms in the primary dwelling is limited to four. The special permit shall be revoked if the number of bedrooms is increased without prior approval of the planning board. The accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. An inspection will be required to verify the structural integrity of the septic system, and any additional information will be provided to demonstrate the number of bedrooms. Five, that was number four. Five, the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included for recording at the Registry of Deeds. Six, parking to serve both units shall be shown on the lot rather than partly within Hillcrest Road. The change shall be made prior to the filing of the motion-
Special permit or decision or something?
Prior to the decision with the town clerk.
That means like-
Right, to the filing of the decision, okay.
Okay. I think we've got to change one thing.
All right.
That is, on the first floor elevation, we have to identify that those drawings are going to be modified to give you a separate exit.
Okay. All right. So-
I'm sorry, they'll be modified for what?
You could give it a second exit.
To the main house.
To the main house.
Oh, oh.
Will be updated to show the existing, right?
Right.
Yeah.
What we're doing is we're going to put the missing door back. And if we're really good, we'll take the one that we took off upstairs to the exercise room and put it downstairs.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have motions more?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, and also, this, we need to change this from 20 Dia Com and Drive to 33 Barker.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you?
Okay.
Moving rapidly along.
Moving right along. We're only 15 minutes late. We're hardly into our agenda. Middle school identification sign. I assume that's why they're here.
People ahead of us.
I know. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Can come and ask questions.
It's as big as a car.
Yeah.
It's as big as a car.
I mean, you've got this, and then you've got this.
Yeah, I don't know. They want to sign, we can listen.
Okay. Identify yourselves.
Yeah, Shane Nolan with Detless Projects, we're the owners' project manager for the new middle school.
John McCarthy, Superintendent of Schools.
John Richardson, Goodyear Architects.
Yep, so we appreciate the opportunity to come back again. We were here with you guys two weeks ago. We presented a proposed site sign for the new middle school. You guys had some comments. We took those on board. We went back to our school building committee. The school building committee is a 15-person committee that was appointed to oversee the construction of the new middle school that's been in place for about four years now. And we were- Yep, so, we appreciate the opportunity to come back again. We were, we were here with you guys two weeks ago. We, we presented a proposed site sign for the, the new middle school. And you guys had some comments. We, we took those on board. We went back to our school building committee. And the school building committee is a, is a 15-person committee that was appointed to, to oversee the construction of the, the new middle school that's been in place for, for about four years now. And we went back to them with your comments. We looked at some, some of the, the other options and some of the signs. We, we've been talking about this sign with our committee since February. It had come up over the last couple of months before we presented to you. And we, we, we tried to look at ways where we could address your, your comments and concerns from the, the last, the last planning board meeting. So, what, what we presented tonight is what we came up with at, at our meeting. And the committee voted to, to come back and present this to you. They, they voted unanimously on this sign as their preferred option.
Could I interrupt for a second? Did you get the input from the design review committee?
We did, yeah. We got that letter from Hal.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, so that's what we're here to present tonight. This is the, the, the sign that was approved by our building committee and which we would like to present to you tonight.
Pass it over to John.
And so, in processing that, that feedback, the design and the committee have made several changes. One, they've relocated the sign from its initial proposed location to be in the traffic island. Two, we've reduced the size of the sign to approximately two-thirds. It's gone from 15 feet wide to 12 feet wide. And it's a three foot four tall for the masonry portion. But it is still essentially the same design in that it uses the materials from the building, the painted metal panel and the same brick, and also a painted metal pole. We did look at four other options with the building committee that were different designs based on the feedback that we had gotten from the design review committee. But as Shane said, and ultimately after discussion, the committee voted unanimously to, to stay with this design. They felt it fit best with the building.
And did you, in that discussion, did you address the design review committee's input?
We did discuss that and we looked at, like I say, very different styles of sign.
Because that's not what I was getting at.
Oh.
I think if I remember their letter, they were suggesting that we ought to be looking at this kind of holistically with the high school and have, have consistent signage across both locations to make it look like a true school campus as opposed to one new building and the appendage behind it.
We discussed that comment too. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. The, but the, the project we have is a middle school project. We don't have authority or funds for redoing the high school sign.
Okay. Laura, you have any questions?
No, I just had a couple really brief comments. I think one of the things that has happened is that the sign is being proposed right now is smaller. And I think with the, the big building and the big high school building, that having something a little bit smaller is going to maybe make a little more of a human scale over there, which I would imagine would be something that kids would respond to. And otherwise, I think, you know, that the new location is, seems like a better one. But, you know, it's, it's a design situation and, you know.
Okay, thanks.
Everyone's going to have different taste.
Okay. Well, you all know how I feel about this sign. And you all know that I feel that it's unnecessary. But if this is what you want, then I guess this is what we have to deal with. However, if this is what, the road you're going to take, I would lose the pole. I would take that pole down. I would just have it go, you need the anchor, let the pole go. I, I just don't think that it's necessary. It serves no earthly purpose unless you want to put a flag on the top of it. It, it's just an appendage. And I know that it's there to basically anchor this. And I think Richard had pointed out at the last meeting that the pier that this goes into, does it really have to be that long? But, you know, if you can lose the pole, then I'll support this. I, I do think that it's overkill. I don't think that it's necessary. I think that it's beautifully written across the top of the school itself. But if this is what you all want, and 15 people said that this is what they want, then how, who am I to argue with them?
Well.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand. You presented your arguments, why and how you came to the design that you have. My take on it is somewhat similar to Anne's. I'm not sure that you really need the sign, but I can see putting up the new building, it's worthy of a new sign. So, to the extent that's the sign you want, you looked at our comments from design review, I'll support your change, your, your consistent sign.
What about the pole? I just have a quality, I've got the previous presentation here where you had marked out that it was going to be in the circle with D. So, I just wanted to be 100% sure. Where are you proposing it now based on the previous handout that you gave us?
Yeah, it's, it's in that teardrop turnaround.
So, isn't that where you had proposed it before?
Well, previously, before the last meeting, after the design review, it was somewhere else.
It was in the teardrop, I think that's what's in that.
Well, you kind of, it's like a big-
Where was it before?
It was, it was down here at the turn, at the turnoff road behind the town hall.
Oh, really?
Yeah, originally it was proposed to be there.
So, but when we saw it last time at the planning board, it had already moved to the traffic circle.
That is correct.
That is, that has not changed.
No.
So, the main thing that's changed is the size is-
Smaller.
25% smaller? Or would you, what was the, the number?
It's two-thirds of seven. It went from 15 to 12.
Three feet small.
Okay.
Well, I guess I have a similar comment in the sense of, I know the pole is supposed to be referencing something nautical. To me, it doesn't seem very nautical. I don't know, maybe I'm just being stupid, but if it was going to be nautical, I feel like it should really go forth and be, be a mast or something. Because I know this is sort of symbolic, but it just, I agree with Anne completely. It just looks like a pole, an appendage. If I'm driving up to it, I wouldn't immediately get the fact that it's supposed to be some nautical reference, that it's a sailboat or a mast of a sail. So, that's one aspect. And the pier itself that it goes into, you didn't decrease the size of that pier at all, right?
It's about two courses lower because the whole sign was shrunk.
But it's just as wide, the pier. It's just as wide as it was.
No, I scaled everything uniform.
So-
With masonry courses, so it's not.
And is the, the-
When you say pier, I-
I'm sorry, the brick, the brick pier.
Oh.
I, we were saying, I had proposed just having or making that half the size and just putting another brick pier on the other side, making it real simple.
We reviewed that. We, that was one of the four other options we reviewed with the building committee.
And the metal that it's, the, that the background where it says Lester J. Gates Middle School, is that the same metal as the cornice of the, the middle school?
Yeah, it's the same metal you can see right now out the window.
Okay.
It's the, it's the cornice in the upper story.
Is the, is the angle of the slice the same as the angle of the cornice?
I do not think that it is. I, I certainly didn't-
I guess what I, okay, maybe my question should be, are you trying to reference the two? Are you trying to tie that together? Because this is my, my big problem with this sign is I feel like it doesn't tie into the architecture of the school very well, and it doesn't tie into the nautical feeling of Situate very well, in my opinion.
Yeah, I can't argue with your opinion.
All right. But I guess if, like you said-
But that was the objective? This was supposed to be a nautical theme? That's what this is representing?
It was supposed to reflect the school and, and use the materials of the school. There is a secondary reading that is an abstract boat, just like the tall stair tower is an abstract lighthouse. But that's meant to be abstract, not literal. We, a year ago, we looked at a picture with an actual boat on it.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't like that.
So, I'm just reading over the, the DRC comments right now. So, I guess potentially if we take their comments at, if there ever was a new high school sign, it could also be a replicated exactly, and that would be the consistency as potential.
We have begun the process of painting the metal panels in the high school to match the gray of the middle school.
Well, I guess I feel similar to Bill and Anne is the fact that I still don't like it, but if, if, how many members are on the school?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. If 15 members want it, I feel like I'm going against the stream here.
Could you, could you, excuse me, Richard, could you lose the pole? Could we just dispense with the pole?
I mean, all of the design could be changed. We did review this, and that pole in particular was discussed with the committee, so I don't quite know how to answer that.
Well, we started looking at it in February. It's been reviewed by the building committee at least three times, probably four times now with the last review. We've looked at various versions of this with a pole, without a pole. So, it, it came and it went. We looked at it with, went out, it was higher, it was lower, with a variety of different looks. And at the end of the day, and we do have architects, I don't know if any of them are here tonight besides our architect, we do have architects on the building committee from the town. So, and they, and they were strongly in favor of keeping the pole.
Because it was asymmetric and they felt it balanced.
So, so, so as we discussed this again, went back and forth, do we do two piers, one pier, different, smaller pier, same-sized pier? The pole ended up staying.
How tall is the pole?
It is no nine feet tall.
It was taller at one time.
It was tall.
And I can just see some seventh graders shimmying up that pole.
They're going to grease it.
Yeah, seriously. I can support the sign, but I cannot support the pole. It's just very simple. I can't support that pole. I think it's, oh, you know how I feel.
Let's, we have people who want to make comments, public comments here? Anybody? Yes?
My name's George Kelly. I live at 56 Moore Land Road, and I am a member of the committee. Our concern is that Shane has reminded us, as we've discussed this through the months, that we're out of time. That the, the people that are building the middle school are going to start breaking down and leaving, and we're going to lose metalworkers, masons, landscapers, and we're going to be opening a middle school with outside. So, that's our concern. We want to have a quality product. I don't know mast sails or the brick foundation for it. I defer to the architects that are far more expert than I am.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Robin LeBurney, who's the chair of the school building committee. And we had looked at the sign multiple times, and then at our last meeting, went through different options. The one that people liked the absolute least was two piers with a metal sign in the middle. There was discussion of another one that had kind of one pier and written kind of a sign laying on top of that. But between the architect that's on the committee, the principal, and a few other members, they, they all agreed that, that this was the sign.
And your committee was focused just on the middle school?
We were, we're the entire building project, so the performing arts center, the renovated arts wing, and the middle school.
But just on this project?
Correct.
So, nobody's looked at the campus as a whole? Nobody's looked at the campus as a whole, which is now what you've created?
In what way?
Well, for signage.
For signage, yes.
We, we, we have, we have for directional signage, there is, but not-
No, I mean for names.
We haven't looked at the new high school identifications.
The site signage around is all being changed?
Yeah, I mean, like, if you look at F here has the, the athletic fields, performing arts, gymnasium, visitors, you know, all these signs we kind of like.
This, this is my opinion, but I think the design review committee has a very good point, is that we've changed the entire nature of this campus. We created a campus. And that if we're going to identify individual facilities, we ought to make it look like a campus from the signage point of view. And directional signs are fine, but there's also the individual signs for the individual schools. And I think they have, my view is they have a very good point here is that, and I realize everybody's objective here is to get this project done, but the problem is that this project changed the whole nature of what this place looks like. And, and I believe it would probably be in your purview to look at the entire setup and say, can we get the school signage to match each other as well, or to complement each other? And I think that's what the design review committee was getting at. And I hear the, I hear the, the notion being that, well, that wasn't our job, but it's got to be somebody's job. We're the planning board, so we're trying to look at it a little more holistic level. And that's what I would ask, is, is there a way to, to make the sign, signage across the entire school campus? Because this is now a school campus. This is not the middle school. Even though the middle school sort of dwarfs the high school. So, I guess that's my question. Is there a way to make this consistent? And I realize you're working on your little project, right? And big project in that regard, but this is a broader issue.
So, so, so as John said, this is, this is a middle school sign where we, we've signed an agreement with the, the mass school building authority, who are, are partner in this, and they're, they're funding part of this project, to, to, about $21 million. This, this would likely be reimbursable by the MSBA as part of the middle school project. If we do it as part of the high school project, it would not be reimbursable. This sign we had priced by the contractors is about $40,000. So, I think to, to, to add another one is another $40,000 at least, so, so that would have to go back to the, the building committee.
How much did we spend on the middle school?
It's 55, 55 million.
55 million?
Yeah.
And you spent 30 some odd million renovating the high school, right? Seems to me there's, there ought to be an opportunity to get the signage to complement each other.
My point being is that, that's not a decision any of us can make either tonight. We have to go back to our, our committee. Well, even-
I, I mean, we don't, we don't necessarily disagree.
That's what you would want.
Well, yeah, we don't disagree with anybody's point about the campus. And quite frankly, when the conversation about the sign first came up, we immediately dismissed matching the current high school sign. Nobody, nobody liked that. So-
I would be on board with that.
Right. So, so we have agreement there. However, as Shane has said, you know, this sign, we're going to get MSBA likely to pay for, you know, 40 something percent of the cost perhaps, this maybe won't be that high, but they'll pay for some of it. Whereas if we do a new high school sign to match this one, we're going to be in the range of, you know, paying all ourselves, whatever that cost ends up being. Plus, we haven't, we haven't priced it. This sign has been designed, then shrunk, priced. I don't know if the price has shrunk. The new, yeah, the new one hasn't been priced. That was the older one. So, you know, do, we don't disagree with the fact that the signs should match and that it's a campus. We totally, 100% agree with that. The question is, can we do it within the, you know, the project? And, you know, is it, is it worth, worth it to the town? Because that's ultimately, it's going to fall on the town that, you know, we're paying, you know, 35 to 40,000 dollars for a sign that we're not going to get no reimbursement for. It's a, it's a legitimate question.
I mean, Shane has to go through all the changes on the project and separate those related to the high school auditorium, which are not reimbursable, from the middle school ones, which potentially are.
I get all that.
Yeah.
Right? I'm, I'm not arguing about the dollars in sense of one thing versus the other. It just seems to me that becomes the excuse to say, okay, we'll deal with the middle school and forget about the high school and forget about trying to tie these two things together.
I would love to tie them together, but again, it's-
I know it's not your job, but it's some, it should be somebody's job.
Could we have that as a condition though, in the sense of saying, let's say, let's, theoretically, we approve the sign, and we say, on the condition that if there, and I say if, there ever was a high school sign, it has to match? Like, we put that in there, like, in the sense of not, not forcing them to do that, but just saying?
I would like to know if somebody's working on it.
Yeah.
I guess that would be my question. Is somebody going to work on it? Yeah, so somebody has to come up with capital to do it. I understand that, right? And, you know, we don't want to lose the opportunity to help pay for half of it, right? But to me, all we're talking about is half of it. The other half is the high school. high school. And, and in fact, you know, is there some other sign that needs to happen, like, right up at the entrance that talks about the high school, middle school campus or something like that? I don't know. But it seems to me, and I, I tend to agree with the design review committee, this is an opportunity to really look at that. And, you know, what you, what you essentially do by approving this particular sign, is you say that the high school sign has to somehow, you know, have some, some connection. Doesn't have to be exactly the same, but has to have some connection if you ultimately build a new high school sign, right? So that it feels like you've knitted both places together. Because you certainly have from a facilities point of view.
Yeah, I would suggest it'd be something about being compatible, because you wouldn't want to match the exact sign.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm not suggesting that. Compatible is a good word.
I think one of the things that the design review stated was the possibility of putting off, putting up this sign until such time as everything could be put together. And I just have to say, as a taxpayer, and maybe I shouldn't say this, but I think $40,000 for a sign like this is beyond pale. I really have a real problem, because $40,000 represents the, a starting school teacher. I really have a problem with this. I really do. I, I think, I think that it's, even before I knew the price of this, I felt the sign was overkill. But that's just how I feel.
Where, what's your, where's the majority of the money on this thing?
Yeah, really.
We have a breakdown, but there's structural steel, there's foundations, there's break, I mean, none of that is designed here. I just want to be clear. That's, that is a price from the contractors.
Yeah.
And we have no stake in, I, I agree, it's very expensive. But the whole school is very expensive. That's the nature of public construction. That's why it's $55 million.
But this sign is gonna be forever be a one-up, because it's not gonna match up to the high school, unless you put a lighthouse over there.
And I say, within 10 years, that high school's coming down. We'll have to wait and see. But it is.
So, listen, looking at the DRC and what they suggested, is that even possible? It says if funds have to be spent by a certain date, could they go into an escrow account earmarked for some kind of design competition to create a unified system? Could that, is that even possible?
The, the project is audited monthly by, by MSBA, and then it, it, it takes a bit of time to close it out. But, but we're, what we do with the funds is take it away MSBA as well. We, we have a funding agreement. And I, I've never done it before. We can ask the question, but I don't think we could. Not from, not from, from that side.
What you're, what you're telling us is that if I kiss the sign goodbye, I don't save $20 million, $20,000.
We, we, with MSBA reimbursement, we, we have to submit all our costs and tell them at some point, this is the final cost. And we obviously want to do that so, so the town can get all the reimbursement back. And if, if this dragged out, the design competition would just take so much longer to do that. And MSBA wouldn't be able to close the project. We wouldn't be able to get our final funding. So, could it be done?
Did you ask them about escrowing money or something like that?
I certainly can. I've never heard of it done before.
Yeah, generally, they are extremely discouraging if changes in general and, and what they call third-party changes, changes requested by any town entity, be fired, building inspector, which often happens on projects, and those are all excluded. When they look at the state overall, they want to make sure that towns do the project they promised at the start of the project funding agreement, and not expand the scope. And they're very rigid about that.
We haven't suggested to expand the scope. It's not what we're suggesting.
I think the MSBA would see a high school sign as an expansion of the scope.
Excuse me?
I'm not suggesting that the MSBA would pay for the high school sign. I think what the design review committee had suggested is can you escrow the money for the middle school sign, and then do a consistent design across purposes?
I, I, the answer to that would be, I, I just wouldn't close the project down. Escrow doesn't, there's no advantage to doing that. Project can't close until we're finished spending all the money from the project. So whether that's six months after, 12 months, or 18 months after.
How long is the process?
Usually takes about 12 months.
12 months. So we couldn't get this sort of designed and built in 12 months?
Well, we, 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 we could. Again, some of the concern is the school is scheduled to be finished the end of July. There's six or seven different subcontractors involved in this sign. We have to go design another one, price that. There's a, there's a submitted process then that the, the subcontractors have to go through with the architect. So, so it is a drawn-out process. And getting the subcontractors back after this demobilized makes it that much more expensive and hard to do.
So the price would go up, most likely.
Does this sign light it?
There, there is.
By moving it, there's the possibility to light it.
Possibility or?
Internally?
Internally.
Uh-uh. Not allowed under our bylaws. There can be no internally lit signs outside. You would have to have it, have a light on it.
You can do uplight.
Uplight it. You can't.
We can do that.
Hold it, hold it a second. I thought you already had this priced out. So it either does or doesn't have a light.
When we had it priced, it was in a different location, so there was no power at that location. So we didn't have it lit.
There's no power here either, right?
Yeah, there is.
There is, there's.
The new location is next, it's right next to a light pole. When I say lit internally, it is two sheets of aluminum. The first one is cut with the letters cut out of it, so there's a void. It makes a shadow during the day. I understand there's a bylaw about internally lit signs. You can tell me if that would strike it. But it's not a sign that glows. It's not a clear plastic sign. But you could put a light, a concealed light, low lumens, and it would make the letters reverse.
I'm sorry, I thought this was, these were actually letters on.
They're cut.
They're cut in.
And is it the same, I think we asked this last time, but then we didn't get a, a real good answer, I believe. It's the same font that's on the, the school? The exact same font and spacing and lettering and?
It, it can be the same. It, it has to be a stencil font, because they're, they're cut, so there will be tabs, so the O in O doesn't fall out, and the triangle in A doesn't fall out.
Any other comments? Yes?
If we, if we do, we, um, I, I just don't see the benefit of that. Our committees, our committees are envoted on this being the sign that they want. I don't think, it, it didn't, I didn't get the sense or at that meeting that people were gonna change their minds. And to that, to your point about the high school sign, I didn't have a.
As I said, you're looking at your individual signs, your individual school, and I get that.
Right.
I'm just saying, you've changed the nature of the whole facility here. And, and at least at a minimum, I would like some commitment for somebody to look at this holistically and say, what are we gonna do about the high school? And how should we really have this sign so that it looks like a true middle school, high school campus, and not like a middle school with something stuck behind it?
And that's what you've, you've.
And that's what you've got.
That's what you've done. That's what you've done.
That's why I fully support what the design review committee has said, that there ought to be some compatibility between the signs, not, doesn't have to replicate it. But I just want to know that somebody is gonna move on to that sort of broader issue, as opposed to just say, okay, we got our middle school sign done, we're done, right? Because it's very myopic. It's, it's looking at only your project. And I understand, that's what you're doing, right? I'm just saying.
Well, we've had high school elements to the project. We had our performing arts center and a renovated arts wing.
I hear that. I hear that.
My understanding of the high school sign is it was a gift from a class.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like we would hit a lot of resistance of ripping down a class gift sign.
Right.
And spending.
And it was a gift before there was a middle school in front of it.
Right.
I'm just saying, you've, you have changed the nature of it.
Yes.
And we ought to make sure it's consistent. And I'm, I'm kind of fully on board with that. Yes?
Nancy Hull, Finance Director and a member of the school building committee. I, I think it would be, it is fair to say that the members that are in attendance tonight will bring back the comments of the planning board about the fact that there needs to be a holistic look at that, now that it is a campus and not just a single school. And that since the school building committee also contains two members of the school committee, the superintendent and the school finance director, you would have at least four members of that management team who would then have gotten that message communicated to them, and it would be in minutes. So they would then do something in the interior capital plan or the control when they look at the campus overall. Because once they're done with the middle school project, you'll go back with this, this needs to be fixed, or this needs to make it more consistent as you go through. Myself, if, if a high school sign came before the committee, I would vote against it as it's outside the scope. I know there will be several other members as well who would vote, vote that it would be outside of the scope of that particular project. It doesn't mean that we don't see the need for it. It just means that we're trying to be stewards of the project. And to Ann's point.
I get that. I, I'm fully, I, I understand that completely, right?
And to Ann's point.
All I would like to know is that somebody will not drop this ball and will come back here and tell us that we're looking at it broadly, right?
I'd be glad that you'd have it brought back. Have that reflected in the minutes and communicate that back to the committee.
And unfortunately, because you're wedded to this sign, everything will pivot around that particular sign and that design, right? So, the compatibility that we seek is gonna be, it's gonna pivot off this particular design.
Right. But to Ann's point, this was not a discussion that was, okay, here's design review committee's comments and planning board's comments. Well, we like this, our sign anyways. This was probably a good hour to an hour and a half lively debate between members of the school committee, because not all members are in love with this sign. But all members that were in attendance, 13 out of 15, are in agreement that in scaled down version, that it is a good representation of that school. So I, I, I'm on board with Ann. I do not like the poll.
Uh-uh.
But such is life.
Well, you know what? We don't, why do we have to settle? Why do we always have to settle?
It's not settling. It's reaching a compromise and understanding other people's points of views.
I understand that. And I'm big on consensus. I really truly am.
It was a vote. We, it's not like we just sat there and had a debate.
I understand that.
We voted in somewhere for it and somewhere against it.
Right.
That's what this is here. That's what this is gonna be here too.
Yep. That's exactly what it's gonna be here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we can ask the superintendent to make a commitment to conform the signage, because he's gonna be in view for it. But I think that.
I wouldn't be asking the superintendent. I'd be asking the school board. I would be asking the organization, not the individual.
So I think I would look to Robin, Robin, as a member of the school board, to endeavor to conform the, the sign. Oh, okay. I'd ask Nancy.
But I'll still talk to them.
To endeavor to conform the signage. But we don't have funding for it now. We do have funding for the middle school, and we're running out of time.
And I think.
And it's going to become substantially more expensive the longer we debate it.
And I think Jerry's correct. I think this would now be in the, in the hands of the school committee to put this forward as, as a project.
Can we get the school committee to come back to the planning board and say, we've looked at this. We think this is where it needs to go, even on the consensual nature before. We have to, we have to, you know, identify funds and all that kind of stuff. And I'd like to know that there's maybe a plan.
Yeah.
That it's an affirmative commitment to come back and, and share that with us.
I mean, two, two members of the committee, of the school building committee, are school committee members. Rich Hebert and Mike Hayes. So, we certainly can, neither one is here tonight. We certainly can bring it back to them and say, you know, would the school committee entertain coming back to the planning board to discuss the high school signage? And whether or not we should look to replace that?
I would, I would respectfully suggest that that would be a condition of, of any approval.
It seems like a reasonable condition.
I don't know what it buys you, but I'll go along with it.
Any other comments? So what do you want to do here? We have a motion.
Yeah.
Oh my God. I move to approve the identification signed for the Lester Gates Middle School, as shown on the renderings by Door and Whittier, presented to the planning board on June 22, 2017, with an overall length of fifteen, 12 feet, and an overall height of?
Three foot four.
Three.
To the base, not the pole.
What's the height?
The pole's nine feet.
That includes the base and the pole, the nine feet?
Nine feet is the height of the pole. The sign itself.
From the ground.
And, and from the ground.
Yeah, the sign appears three foot four. It was almost 12 before, right?
Just a way to make sure that you've got this one and not the one.
Here was the original proposal.
And a height of 3.4 feet, except that the sign shall not be internally illuminated. It is the express wish of the planning board that signage from the middle school and high school be compatible as the two schools appear as one campus. The planning board asks the school committee to come back to the planning board to discuss a coordinated program on signage.
And this does not include, we haven't discussed lighting?
I was just a condition not to be.
Not to be internally lit.
Okay.
Okay.
But do we consider that to be with the cutout? I mean, that's kind of a nuance.
Well, it's not internally lit, though.
So?
Okay.
There's no lighting in it, right?
Well, there's lighting, the way I understand it, you cut it out, there's actually the lighting inside that's illuminating the, the back of the letters, correct?
No, I thought it was daylight.
No. Well, I, I thought you were saying not to light it.
No, no, we can't, we don't internally lit signs, Richard.
No, no, I know that. But I thought that he was describing a process that was a bit different, that are plastic internally lit.
No.
Like, if the, okay, anyway, okay.
Let it go.
I, I was describing a different process, but I understood that it doesn't matter. Just it won't be powered.
And there's no way on God's earth we can remove that pole?
Is that the motion?
It's not in the motion. It's not in the motion.
Discussion, right?
Oh, okay.
I.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I, again, it's all about consensus.
I want to make sure that.
I don't, I don't agree with it, but I feel like.
I don't agree with it at all.
Consensus-wise, if the.
We would understand reasons.
Well, okay, I get it. All right. I've made the motion.
So it's been motioned. Do we have a second?
An e-motion. I'll second it.
Allies in favor?
Aye. Reluctantly.
Yes, I was gonna say reluctantly too.
Very reluctantly.
But I.
It's kind of hard for this board to give you a positive vote when we really don't like the blasted sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So please, convene this, the school board.
Will do. It's in Nancy's capable hands.
So I have a question though, Ann, about the.
What?
If a letter is raised off the, the face, and.
I'll be right back.
Do you need a recess?
Yeah, for a minute, please.
Okay, we're on, we're on recess. Okay, we're running late, but this is a site plan administrative review for 4 Union Street. See, we have our old friends back again?
Yes.
Okay. You've got the floor.
I, I guess, I'll just start with the architectural drawings that we have, if you want.
Got a new set?
Yes, I've, it's been for the design review. The new set includes the changes that they had suggested.
Okay.
Maybe you could, I have the older set, so maybe you could just point out what those were, or are.
Let's see. The gable end, end up being clapboards with a color selection. That was one of the suggestions.
Also, they changed, they, they changed it to clavoured siding?
Yeah, to confirm there was clavoured.
Okay.
Yes. And then the six doors, we kept as six panel and painted blue. And then the balance of the building, we kept the glass. On the garage doors, we changed to four simple lights instead of eight lights. And then, on the back side, we added two windows that would be facing the brewery.
And are the dormers narrower? They look a bit narrower there in that drawing.
Those are the front dormers.
But compared to the one I have, that looks, maybe it's just the perspective, it looks just-
I think it's the same size.
Oh, it's the angle, okay.
Yeah, they haven't changed.
I think it's just looking at that boredom.
Okay.
And it's on the gable line. And it suggested, in lining up the building, what we did, we stepped the addition back a foot from the existing building to create a little pause, and in that, the first five feet, we stepped it back two feet.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand that, can you say that again?
Sure.
Step it back, what do you mean?
The existing building light is one foot-
Oh, I see, you stepped the face back.
Yeah, the existing building, so we stepped the whole face and the addition back.
I got it, okay. Well, that's this one foot, I see.
Oh, actually, now, now I get it.
That makes sense now.
Yeah.
Because the old one was, it was flush, right?
Yeah.
Right, that was a change they suggested.
And then, it looks like, since we're talking about that little setback, or out, I don't know what you would call it, alcove, is that a cased opening, it looks like, from the elevation? The door that's all the way up on the left of the elevation?
Right, yeah, this is, that elevation, that door is recessed by-
That's back, exactly.
About eight feet in.
So, there's trim around that, I see, though.
Yes, the outside is cased, is a four-foot cased door.
Okay, that's what they have.
And that four feet is set back two feet.
Okay.
Where does that door go?
This door, right here, if you look at the plan, that goes, that goes, will claw back into the existing building.
Oh, I only see one, I just see the door going in.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it actually, it looks like it goes into a closet or something.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's just a, that's a, and that's the door into the existing, that's-
Oh, so it's like a little vestibule?
Yeah, just a little-
But that door is what we're seeing that's blue.
This is what we're seeing, right here, yeah.
Yeah, that door right there.
But there's nothing, that's just a closet?
Yeah, there's just a hallway that leads into the existing building.
Oh.
We recessed it back, so the-
Oh, is this an opening right here? That's what this is?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's an existing door.
I didn't think that up.
Yeah, and the sprinkler room, we just left exposed, the outside, so they had to get out of the service with a fire hose. That's why, again, that was exposed, the outside.
That's the fire department access, then?
Yes.
I got it, okay.
And again, dormers remain the same. Actually, I think they're all in the neighborhood. But it's weathered wood. Yeah, same, same one, same thing.
But matches the existing, okay.
Yes.
So, this ends up being sort of a, ends up being lower, Richard?
Yeah.
You were trying to match the garage doors going all the way across, and this ends up being kind of shorter bays, if you, or lower bays?
Yeah, the doors are ten by eight.
Ten by eight, so it's ten feet high?
Uh, no, eight feet high, ten foot wide.
Eight feet high, ten foot wide.
And what, do you happen to know, just ballpark, what are these?
I think they're twelve foot high.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, we try to scale it back down.
Gotcha.
And again, the ceiling height is roughly about four feet lower.
And are these little boxes, are these lights?
Uh, yes, light blocks.
Light blocks.
Exactly, probably what they have right now over the doors, correct?
Yes, I submitted the design review, they've got a picture of the light-
It's a downwash light, it's not, it doesn't shine out.
No, it's a-
And you'd mentioned the color, the doors for the blue?
Yeah, they had recommended, I should put it here, that was the door color.
Is that, the existing door color, to me, is kind of gray, right?
It's been faded, just because it's already about nine years old.
But it is actually this?
It's close to that.
Okay, would you go back and do these doors, or not?
At some point, but they need to be done, yeah.
You didn't want to run into each four of those.
Is that right? For site plan administrative review? I thought it was just-
Just majority?
Yeah, it's just a majority. Laura here? I think it's just a majority for site plan review. We should confirm that. Okay, other questions? Where's the, where's the site plan?
And just for the dormer windows, they're six over six?
Yes.
Which would not necessarily match these, but I like these better anyway, but-
I think those just require grills.
What are those?
Probably they are.
They're just like a double hung window, machine gun slots.
Are you saying that in the addition, you're putting two dormers in there?
Uh, there'd be two facing Union Street.
Yeah, okay.
And then, there'd be two on the opposite side.
Facing the brewery.
Okay. Laura, site plan review is just a majority? It's not four out of four, right?
Yes, yeah, just a majority.
How far is the attic, in other words, to the ridge line, inside?
Do we have a cross section on it?
Forty, yes, forty is from across, that would be eleven feet from the floor line to the peak.
Eleven?
Yeah. You could put accessory apartments up there.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, you could.
That style we're asking for?
I know.
At this point, it'd be sprinkled in, a lot of the heating equipment up there. If that's the case, we'd have to come back and put it in after mission.
So, is the new, is the site plan, does this reflect the latest changes, the site plan that we're looking at?
Yes, it should.
March 23rd one?
That's what I'm looking at.
There's a revision there, there's a revision block, yeah. Yes, this is, well, it's got a tier too.
June 13th, okay.
And I think he also added a handicap parking spot in the last.
So, the lighting's not right here then, right? Aren't there three lights here?
They wouldn't be shown on the plan.
Oh, is that shown? Be shown on here, be shown on here.
I think we've, again, we have three light blocks here, those would probably be what we'd go with.
Right, so this isn't right on the, on the plan. And what goes in front of the new, what's in front of the new building, is that, is that lawn all the way to the sidewalk?
Yes, right here, that would be lawn to the sidewalk.
Nothing would go there, nothing would park there, no dumpsters would be set there, it's all-
No.
I just want to make sure that this is the face people see from the street, right?
Right.
So, we don't want anything to sort of junk it up, right?
There's a, you're showing a dumpster there.
The dumpster to the left. Is it on your other picture?
I don't think, it's not there currently.
It's in the back.
No, we relocated from where it sits.
Permanently?
Right now, it's in the, if you see from the pictures, it's in the driveway side.
Yeah, it's right next to the, to the new building. It actually cuts off some access to the new building, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's the new location for the dumpster. It currently is back here.
Right.
So, you are moving it to the front?
Yes, well, yes, to that area, to the corner.
Is there any way to put it somewhere where it's not part of what you see from the curb?
I mean, I could eliminate and go to barrels, it doesn't, it's more for convenience for the tenant. To be honest with you, they work crap with it most of the time, I would say.
But is, was there, is there a proposal? I see the curb.
That's existing.
Was there any kind of fencing that was supposed to like block that dumpster?
Uh, like, right now, it's a curb, the curb can already exist, but we're just gonna use it in that area.
That curb's gonna come out when you build this thing, right?
Yeah, but this, yeah, but that already exists, that curb, so it's a key challenge.
So, the curb would basically stop, like, right here, right?
Yeah.
Probably take this out.
Probably take it out.
You got a building here, you got to put foundations and stuff, right? You might get that out. Just to be able to construct it.
So, then, you've done, this is, you add the handicap spot here, that's the difference. You still have all the spots along the side. And then, you've added two over here, in front, correct?
Right.
Richard, I'm starting, would you just tell?
Well, I think I kind of asked my questions as I went through, really. Obviously, I know you don't show us a demo, but I mean, this window would be removed, right?
Yes.
And then, on the elevation, these are shingles, right? You'd have to patch those shingles back, because you, I would think you-
Yes, so we tied it back in with shingles to match, to match the roofing, right?
Yeah, so like, where the-
This over here.
The gabled, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so we, again, we passed the shingles back.
Okay, so the backside shingles and the front, the front addition is clavered?
Yes.
Okay.
And is the, is it proposed to have a sign like that for Union, like a wood sign, is that?
That already exists, so if we could, we'll reuse the same one.
Oh, is that there? Oh, right over here, I see.
Yeah, so we, we might get it, might get it repainted.
And then, one, all of these that I see right here, these are just doors, are these windows here?
Uh, the first two, they're doors, those will remain.
And then, the three windows would be removed?
Two of the three will. If you look, this one window will be right here.
Oh, because it does, oh. Okay.
Right. And actually, those two windows will probably, either reuse them, or those are two windows we're gonna add over here.
And removing this window here for the apartment, doesn't it impact the egress? There's still like two means of egress?
No, there's still egress, yeah.
Okay. I don't think I have any additional questions.
Yeah, one of the things that design review talked about was, at some point, when you replace the existing garage doors to make them look like the-
Yes, when it came time to replace it, to try to match something similar.
How old is the garage doors in your house?
Uh, one's about a year old, and the other, two are about eight, or eight or nine years.
They look pretty good.
Yeah, but they're mismatched.
Well, yeah, someone put a ladder through one, so we replaced one.
I mean, I think you've come light years in terms of what the addition looks like.
That's where we didn't see it before.
Well, it was basically a continuation of one massive building all the way down.
Yeah.
At least with the footstep back and the atrium, I think you're coming back up to break up, you're breaking up in the end, gable. But you're breaking up that, so it's no longer just a long, flat building.
Yeah, we thought that was a, that it was a good idea when we did that, just to, again, give it a little more depth.
I'm still concerned about the density at a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's comparable to some of the other lots in the neighborhood, less than, actually. I think the existing building is thirty-two hundred square feet, and the proposed addition is fourteen thirteen square feet, so we end up with, I think, fifty, forty-six thirteen square footage. I think next door, the brewery, they're about five thousand, six hundred, roughly.
Well, like you said, Bill, I mean, this is the current elevation that people see, which is kind of boring, not too, it's not bad, but it's not great either. I think this has the potential to look real nice.
No, no, I think the changes that's suggested by the design review and have come back from, looks like a horse, looks like a horse mark. But it's much better than that one.
Anything else?
No, there's none.
Ann?
Well, I too am concerned, I mean, I think what you're showing us now is way better than what you had before, but I'm concerned about the utilization of the property itself, and I'm also concerned about all the pavement. There's a lot of, you've got fifteen parking spaces, fine, is this for all of the worker bees that are in the bays, or where they come and park their cars, or how does all that parking work?
Actually, I think the overall pavement is probably less than what we have now, because the building's taken up some of the pavement on the existing site, and the parking, I don't know, wintertime, they use the garage bay to park it in too, usually it's snow and stuff like that, but usually the workers have to place the park on in front of the building now, continue to do that, and then, there's the overflow around the back if needed.
And there appears to be, what is the access for the second bay in this proposed addition? Because it looks like it's, you know, right near the dumpster, and the parking, is there any possibility of taking that dumpster and moving it in back?
I think we should do that.
So that it-
From an access and a aesthetics perspective, right?
Right, so that the trash truck backs in, and it's right there.
If that's the case, we might eliminate the dumpster and just go with barrels.
But then, but that creates another issue if they don't cover them, and we've got stuff everywhere.
Well, the barrels, I spoke with Graham Waste, the barrels they have for both recycling and trash, have the covers already on them, so they, you don't take them off, but they hinge, they're a heavier barrel, they'll come and pick up, but if we move the dumpster back in here, I'm more concerned with snow removal, if the log comes back, they're pushing it right into the dumpster, then we kind of create another issue, and we really don't want it out in front here and seen, so we could certainly, you know, eliminate it, and-
So, where would the barrels go, then?
Uh, we could put those around back, they're fairly, they're not, they're fairly small, so, you know, guys can keep each of their bay out front, and then, around back for the tenants, we could put a couple against the house. Again, they're not-
But if you were to screen this dumpster from the world, in other words, fence it or do something with it, so that when you're coming down Old Country Way and turning onto Union Street, you don't see it.
John, they have a screen, you can see the swinging doors in front of it?
Oh, okay, actually, on his plan, he does have doors in front of it, so, or we could just put-
I'm sure the swinging gates were a fence.
Yeah, but now, right now, it's kind of a white fence around the dumpster, so it's kind of-
Last time I looked at it, it had a huge dumpster in there.
That's not there today.
Oh, is this, is this what's behind the car here? Is that what this is?
Oh, yeah, that's the white fence, here, is the dumpster.
But it's kind of hard-
It's a smaller dumpster, it's in a three-sided pan.
So, on the plan, you're proposing to have that be a white fence on three sides around it, correct?
Yeah, that's what we have now, we move it over to the new location, we do the same. We move it over to the new location, we do the same.
From the handicap access parking, how do you get into the building?
Uh, you could either come in the rear door here, or come around, and, you know, depending on what's there, for the, again, for the workers.
That's a hike.
This is the accessible entrance that you got, right? That's what you showed when you were attacking, the existing accessible entrance.
And actually, there's no walkway around.
That's right.
You can't go this way.
Nope.
No.
Then that's the only access.
If you, if you park in one of those spots, you're basically walking on the lawn to get around to the front of the building.
Yeah, again, it's for the workers, the workers, not for the public, to come in. Same thing with the restrooms and stuff, they're, they're...
That's not the point. I mean, basically, because you're putting in lawn and what have you, and let's say we have a big snowstorm, you plowed all of this, these people have to walk all the way around to get in.
No, oh, like...
Just walk in the street?
They have to walk on the street.
Are you talking about the workers that work at the buildings?
Mm.
Yeah, I mean, or they could park out in front and come into the garage bays.
But then, we're going in circles here.
Yeah.
Well, if they're parked there, then the people who use the apartments will have to park here, right? So their access will be up, going this way.
Why, if you move the, is the handicapped space for the, but the, the apartments are not handicapped accessible, are they?
No, they're on a second floor with no...
Okay. So if you were to take that handicapped access and move it to the front, where number eight is?
Well, Anne, I just wanted to point out, according to the elevation, there are three doors along this. So that, basically, in front of ten, in front of eleven and twelve, if you look at the elevation, there's one, two, three doors.
Are they accessible?
That, again, leads up to the second floor, so they, they'll be accessible.
So there's two doors into the new, okay, because, into the new area. So, I guess if they were workers, per se, I'm just pointing out that they wouldn't necessarily have to walk around. They could walk in the back door, correct?
But aren't there internal partitions in the, in the building?
Well, there's two spaces.
Two bays, so every one.
So two rental spaces.
And can you get from...
They're probably going to be locked, right? I mean, they're not going to be open, necessarily.
Can you get from...
I mean, this is somebody's workspace, right? So he's not going to be open for handicap accessibility, right?
But I guess these spaces are for the workers, though, correct? Not for the visiting public? I mean, there's not really visiting public?
No, because it's the people of the apartments, too.
Some of these are parked for this overflow for the front, and the workers parked in here.
So I guess, the, so you're concerned that people would be walking around. I'm just saying, if you did happen to park there as an overflow, and you did work in one of the bays, you would have keys to walk in.
I'm just looking at the handicap access, right? These aren't open, all three of them, if they're not open, handicap has to come all the way around.
And I'm suggesting you move the handicap to the front.
Anne, I'm suggesting just move that to there, which probably makes sense.
Well, actually, yeah, if you move it to number eight, is that right, or nine? That you have extra space right there.
Yep. And it's much more immediately visible if somebody can drive it in here, right?
As opposed to stuffed in a corner.
Yeah.
But I guess, again, is the handicap for the apartments, or for the business?
Not the apartments.
Not the apartments, yes.
Because apartments aren't handicap accessible.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think it's, really smushed on a lot. And I did have a contractor come up and tell me that I had to vote for this, because it was so important. And I resent the fact that I was told that I had to vote for it. I really do. Hey, what can I say? It's just, we all do the best we can do with what we have to work with. And my concern here is not about other contractors or what have you. My concern is about the town of Situate, and what is in the best interest of the town of Situate. And Green Bush is changing. And it's changing slowly but inevitably. And I'm just trying to figure out if this is the highest and best use of this corner lot. That's what I'm trying to figure out here. Tremendous amount of parking, I mean, there must be, and Devlin has two garages, he has two spaces. You have one space, and then you're bringing in two more. So there's going to be a lot of worker bees working out of this place, am I not, am I correct?
Yeah, mostly storage, so they'll be gone for the day, during the morning or afternoon.
I have nothing further at this point.
I mean, the additional space that we created, you know, with the two bays.
So, I think one of the other issues that was raised was about the TSS production for the stormwater management system. So where do we stand on that?
I can address that. That's not an issue, and let me explain why. There's, I added notes in the plan, the TSS removal is not in zoning by law. It's not in the site plan regulations, which the stormwater was designed. The stormwater system that we proposed was designed under the site plan regulations. The stormwater by law is a separate set of regulations for stormwater designed. This site does not trigger the threshold, which is a twenty-five percent increase in impervious area. Because we have a reduction in impervious area, it's considered a redevelopment project. And by doing that, we use the BMPs as the best management practices. The, I believe, Peter mentioned at the last meeting, for information, I think we achieved eighty-seven and a half percent, even though only eighties required under the BMPs. This, this site had no TSS removal before we came in with this application. The bottom line is, the ninety percent rule does not apply. I did speak with the chairman of the Water Resource Committee. The committee's never met on the project. Her, her comment about the ninety percent rule was in an email to the, to the planning board, wherein she had reviewed the letter from Merrill, where he ended, where they indicated that because we're in the Water Resource Protection District, ninety percent TSS removal is required. What they didn't take into account was, was where that ninety percent rule comes from. Comes from a set of regulations which, which do not apply to this project. But again, we, we have maintained, I believe, eighty-seven and a half percent, so, so that's, that's our response to that question that you had at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think we have somebody here from, from Town Engineers, do we? Probably going to have somebody.
We have Peter Palmer here.
Mr. Chairman, Peter Palmer from Merrill Engineers. In our letter, we did state ninety percent was required. We took that based on the stormwater regulations, because that's what we were asked to review. We didn't go any further than that, as far as whether the stormwater regulations actually applied or didn't apply. So, the basis was, according to the stormwater regulations, they do meet the eighty-seven percent based on, actually, calculations we did, and we agree with that. But I guess the question is whether they have to follow the ninety percent. And put in the stormwater management regulations, they do. But Mr. Marabito was saying that stormwater regulations don't apply here. I am not an expert on that. Again, I reviewed it based on the requirements of the stormwater regulations, so...
Were those only in the stormwater regulation?
Yeah, they were. They're not in the zoning by law.
I thought they modified the zoning bylaws with, within the Water Resources District.
They didn't modify it a lot, no, a lot of them... There are a lot of different pieces to that Water Resource District, but I looked through it about three or four times, and it's, it's just not in there. But it is, it's in the stormwater regulations, but I think Paul's right, that he doesn't trigger it, because he's not increasing impervious by twenty-five percent or more.
How much impervious are we adding?
We've actually have a decrease of six hundred and nine square feet of impervious area. Because where that building's going is...
Is the parking...
There's concrete there, which has been taken up.
Asphalt.
I mean, the asphalt.
Right, the building's impervious, too, right, so...
Yeah.
It is, but you do the numbers.
And what's happening with the parking area?
There, there's still a decrease of six hundred and nine square feet. That was calculated, that was on the, the renewal application as well. That, that hasn't changed.
The reason that is, is that, I think the reason that is, is that a lot of that parking is pervious. It's some kind of material that's going to be considered pervious. And I was, I was going to suggest that, that John go to the Water Resource Committee, and at least show them the material, and make sure that they agree that it's pervious, and we're all on the same page with it.
Well, the design you have is a pervious pavement, and there's some serious details on there. That was also reviewed by your consultant.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe that's...
It's an acceptable design. We've used it on other projects, and the reason we use it is because it is pervious, and it also provides treatment, which you look for in the stone.
You guys are comfortable with, with the pervious pavement, pavement design that it would provide?
Their detail was actually right from the P's handbook, so...
Okay. And that's being applied throughout this overflow parking area?
The new parking area.
Yes, right, the stuff in the back.
The back.
That's all pervious pavement?
Yes.
And you're not going to put any type of a hedge, or any type of greenery between yourself and the brewery?
No, right now, there's a fence that's going to remain.
What's the fence look like? You got it there?
No, I don't think it's really shown yet.
What kind of fence is it?
It's a wooden.
Uh, that picture might have been taken when the fence was removed, but it's since been put back up. It's a wooden fence.
Okay.
So I think it starts off at four feet, then climbs to six feet, as it continues to the back of the yard.
And is the current hedge, will that have to be removed?
Yes, it will be. We'll step just in front of that.
So is there a landscaping plan beyond that?
Uh, no, I didn't know if we wanted to, you know, with the windows being shown there, if we wanted to put hedges and stuff in front of them, or... I planned on maintaining the building with a grass line up to it.
That won't have a walkway on that, on that face?
No, at this point, it'd just be, they could walk through on the lawn.
Okay, so they wear it out, and then you'll put a walkway?
Yeah.
Okay, any comments from the public, anybody here?
Well, and I just wanted to make a comment that, I think this is the third iteration, is that correct? That, the first one where it had the apartments all the way up against the corner, right? There was a separate building.
Yes, that was it.
That was number one. Then number two was the sort of the extension of the building, right? That has sort of a straight extension, and now this one of where it's scaled down.
Yes.
So I think, I guess I just wanted to comment that they certainly have listened to a lot of our comments, and, and gone through the Design Review Committee, and listened to what we've had to say. So I think that should be commended. Thank you. And I agree with Anne that it, it may be a little bit overuse of the site, but at the same time, I'm looking at it like that you really listened to what we've said. So, you know, I would certainly be in favor of this. And no one told me to say anything. No contractor came to me.
Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion?
No.
Oh, and also, I want to say, for all of us, I want to be very specific that the things that happened with Ford Place... Is that in the motion, like, it has to look exactly like this? So that we don't have the same problem where the garage doors have the nice, it looks like this? The windows have the double transom, or the transom over it? I mean, it looks like this.
Yes, I mean, I brought...
One of the things that we've done has been to ask people to put up like, a deposit. I mean, I don't know how else to make sure that people do it.
Because, again, you know, what happened is then all of a sudden, they just change it, and they're like, oh, we don't like those windows. We're not going to do those.
You know, in Ford Place, we drove down there tonight, it looks fabulous. They fixed it.
Better.
Much, much better.
Okay.
Okay? They did it.
I mean, it looked fabulous.
As good as it can look.
They only fixed it because we told them to.
But again, I was trying to, to get ahead of that situation where we wouldn't have to go after them.
I think people are learning their lessons.
Okay.
I hope they are.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, these, yeah, these drawings, yeah, these drawings look, look good. And this is what we're approving, right? And you can't just decide to say, oh, I don't like that door, I don't like the window. You know, I'm going to change it.
Yep.
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah.
That's all my point, I'm sorry.
That's a good point.
Okay.
I haven't written much of that recently. Richard, can you read it at this point?
No, I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll do it. That's great, makes it shorter. I move to approve the site plan entitled "Proposed Site Plan for Four Union Street in Situate, Massachusetts by Ross Engineering Company, Inc.," dated March 23, 2017, with revisions through June 15, 2017. Because it meets the requirements of the Town of Situate zoning bylaw, Section 770.6, site plan review standards of review to a degree consistent with reasonable use of the site, the proposed permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located, subject to the following conditions. All construction shall conform to the site plan entitled "Proposed Site Plan for Four Union Street in Situate, Mass, Massachusetts by Ross Engineering, Inc.," dated March 23, 2017, with revisions through June 15, 2017, except as it shall be modified to meet the conditions below and the elevations and floor plans entitled "Addition to Hallen Carpentry Shop, Four Union Street, Situate." Sheet A1, Union Street and Old Country Way elevations. Sheet A2, Plans and Section, and Sheet A3, Rear Union Street elevation, by David Tonis, Architect, East Bridgewater, dated June 2017. No changes shall be made to the detail without approval of the planning board. Prior approval of the planning board.
Should we make a comment about that the handicap space should be shown in the front? Or maybe, maybe Laura's already done that.
No, I didn't get that.
All right, we'll do that.
I think that was number eight.
Okay. The buildings shall meet all requirements of the Massachusetts State Building Code. Materials and details of construction shall meet all requirements of the DPW, Board of Health, Fire Department, Building Department. Where this site plan administrative review requires approval permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency, such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the approval of this site plan. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to a building permit being issued. Fifteen parking spaces shall be provided, including a handicap space, which shall be located in space number eight to the, at the front of the building. Spaces shall be individually marked with pavement, striping, or concrete bumper stops. The applicant shall provide specs on a sixteen-foot-tall garage door for the addition, with the intent that when the existing garage doors must be replaced, matching doors shall be used.
Is it a sixteen-foot door?
I think it's a twelve-foot door, the existing.
All right, twelve.
Sixteen-foot is the ceiling height.
Would you consider changing it all out now?
Uh, the commercial door is a little bit more expensive. It's not a...
At the point I was making earlier, you, Christ or slash, it's thirty years. So probably not in my lifetime when I ever see him be replaced.
Well, as I say, I've replaced one already, but I'll look into it. I can't, it would be at the tail end of the project if we do that. But if we change it, we'll change all three. I'll see what's available, so, I haven't looked at that size yet to see what is available. But we should be able to hit something close.
And we should include that as part of our condition.
Which is?
Which is that the applicant will evaluate and come back to the planning board with a plan for replacement of those doors.
Yeah, but I mean, if he replaces one, then I've got... Yeah, but I mean, if he replaces one, then I've got one out of the three.
No, you've got to replace all three.
You've got to replace them all.
Yeah.
And the one in the center was the one that was recently replaced because it has the different lights?
Yes.
Correct.
They didn't make the other model anymore, so...
So, I'm sorry, the applicant will evaluate and come back to the planning board...
Concerning replacements...
Of existing...
Of existing, right, existing.
All three.
All three.
Just then of all three 12-foot doors, all three existing doors.
All set?
What would be inappropriate? Let's put a timeframe on that, within the next...
90 days.
Yeah, 90 days is good.
To what?
90 days from the issuing of the permit.
Yeah, that might be a little bit more appropriate. It might take 90 days to get the permit.
The addition, the addition shall be set back a minimum of one foot from the existing structure to offset it from the older building and to visually establish each building as separate entities. The pedestrian opening to the leftmost side of the new addition shall be stepped back two feet. The gable end of the addition facing Old Country Way shall be a painted clapboard. The remainder of the building will be natural white cedar shingles. Ten blue clapboard siding shall be used to match the pedestrian doors that will provide entrance to the new bays and the pedestrian doors currently in the existing three-bay structure. The color of the 12-foot overhead doors for the bays will be white, matching the white of the doors on the current building. Eleven, two small square A21 windows shall be added to the facade facing the microbrewery. They are to be appropriately centered between the egress doors in that wall and shall be of the same size and height from the ground as an existing A-square window already in place on the rear of the existing structure. Twelve, the light fixture shall be as per the architectural light fixture chosen by the applicant and shall be placed above the doors as per the plan. This detail shall be attached to the planning board decision. Roof shingles on the addition are to match the roof shingles on the existing structure. Required prior to application for a building permit, fourteen, the owner shall submit an affidavit indicating that there is one two-bedroom apartment and one one-bedroom apartment above the existing building. Due to the available parking, no change in the number of bedrooms shall occur without prior planning board approval. Fifteen, the development shall obtain all necessary approvals for the use of town sewer. Copy shall be provided to the planning board. The plan shall be modified to show a radius acceptable to the DPW at the entrance to the new parking area. It shall be changed to conform. Okay. Then we go on to the next one. The following notes shall be added to the plans with a full paper copy provided to the planning board prior to application for a building permit. A, the previous parking material must be approved by the Town of Situate Water Division after obtaining input from the Water Resources Commission prior to application for a building permit. Required to the start of construction, twenty-one, whatever number, a pre-construction conference will be required prior to the start of construction, including the planning board's consulting engineer, a representative of the DPW, the site contractor, and the town planner. The applicant shall provide a check to the planning board to cover the cost of inspections by the town's consulting engineers. This shall include inspection of the installation of pervious pavement. The check shall be given to the town planner prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. All clearing and earth-moving operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place. See the approved stormwater permit for the information on erosion controls and the required crushed stone construction entrance, both of which shall be installed prior to start of work. Required during construction, stormwater control measures shall be installed and maintained according to the approved plan. Any changes shall require approval of the planning department. Water and sediment shall not be discharged to the street. Construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 a.m. weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on Saturday and shall cease no later than 7:00 p.m. or sunset, which is, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sunday or legal federal holidays.
Just two things. Since Paul said that that detail on the pervious pavement does come from the DEP manual, maybe there isn't any need to have the Water Resources Committee work at it.
Yeah, and Peter's already said that this is a good detail, right?
So we get rid of A?
Yeah, whichever one that one is.
Whatever it is, it's gone.
And then the other thing I was going to ask is, on those apartments, are those both one-bedroom in theory?
I think, yeah, in theory, I think she said one two-bedroom and one one-bedroom.
Well, yeah, I think...
Okay, I think that's supposed to be...
Are they supposed to both be one-bedrooms?
I think they're supposed to be both one-bedrooms.
So we should modify that accordingly. One other thing we didn't talk about is the dumpster.
Yes, the dumpster needs to be...
Are we eliminating the dumpster?
It doesn't matter to me. As I say, I prefer to keep it. If it's an issue, that's kind of the only spot left, really. I mean, we could put it in the way back, but then the snow removal becomes an issue and then it's near the brewery, so...
If it's, I think you're going to have to tear up this curb just to build this thing anyway, but if the dumpster's in there, then it needs to have the white fence around it.
Yeah.
And that means you can't put those big 50-foot dumpsters in there, which I've
seen in there on occasion, right? So this is a small dumpster right here, right?
Yeah, I think, I believe it's three yards.
Yeah.
Three or six yards, one of the two.
There's a very large one sitting in there.
Yeah.
Like a roofing dumpster.
Yeah, a container that has tools and trash.
And there is a door on the front, correct?
Yes, I might not use that, though. I find in the past that they don't, they end up sagging or get hit. They just, it works for a few weeks and it just seems to drag. So I'll probably cover it like before and then, you know, be hidden there. The dumpster has lids on them, so they'll be down.
Two suggestions. One is no further expansion of the building. And two, no apartments above the addition.
I think, is that a restriction that I can't come back and ask for that? Or is that, I'm not doing it now.
I'm suggesting that there be no apartments above the addition.
The density's high enough, right?
What?
When you say no further expansion of the building, we're basically saying the density on the site is large enough. So are you saying you want to come back and ask to increase it?
I'd like to have that option. I don't know that I am, but, you know, the parking requirements we have now have exceeded what we need.
I think you have it right under the zoning bylaw to apply for a special permit in the business district for accessory dwelling. You can have up to three in the business district.
So are you asking for that now?
No, no, but I just...
Under the zoning bylaw, he would have the right to come back to the board, assuming you had a special permit, a granting authority at that time, and ask for that accessory dwelling use. It's his only way of doing it. If he was in the village overlay district, he could have, he could have up to 16 units of housing per 40,000 square feet. On this site, he could have eight. He's got two now. And what I'm saying, he wouldn't come back under the village overlay district for obvious reasons, but the bylaw does give him the opportunity or any other property owner to come up to the planning board on a special permit application for an accessory dwelling in the business district.
But I would submit, Paul, that I don't think the building would pass the requirements to set out for business overlay district.
Right.
Well, it doesn't. I think that was, we did that at the very, the very first iteration.
We've already, we've already plowed that.
Well, the first, the first time he came in was under the village overlay district. So that was something different. He was coming in with a separate standalone building.
Correct, correct.
You know, part of the...
All I'm suggesting is that he or any associate property owner would have the right to come back to this board and submit a special permit application. It doesn't mean you're going to approve it, but at least they'd have that right. And what I'm concerned about is the motion you're thinking of making would preclude someone from having that right or ability to be able to do that in the future.
Well, we're concerned about the opposite, which is getting pregnant one addition at a time, right? Which is what it sounds like you want to do.
Right.
Like, we've already said, the density on this site is really maxed out, right? And so now you're saying, well, we want to preserve the ability to come back and increase that density again.
What I'm suggesting is that you give up that right now.
I didn't say he would be increasing the building density.
Well, that was the first question, right? No further expansion of the building.
I will feel the problem on that.
I mean, I'd rather not give up, if there's a value to that in the future, it's like saying you can add on to your house.
One of the things I think you need to consider here, okay? This is a very, very dense use of this property. And I think under the circumstances, there are some of us that feel that maybe this shouldn't be. So I guess maybe you're pushing things, pushing the envelope a little bit more than should be pushed. So if, I agree with Bill, no further expansion of this property. It's done. And you said earlier that you were going to put your mechanicals up on, in the attic.
Yes, it has to be heated up there for the sprinkler system, so they will...
Right. And, you know, I mean, let's not push this any further than it needs to be, please?
I, as I say, I don't intend to, but as I say, if it's...
It doesn't matter.
The value.
I don't think it would be feasible anyway, but, but I know...
What is, what, do you want added to this bill? of this site.
Shall be permitted or...
What?
Shall be permitted or...
Shall be...
Shall be no further expansion.
There shall be no further expansion of this site.
Of the building and pervy, you know, pervy, whatever.
Right. The site includes the building.
So I understand you got the right to do it. What I'm suggesting is that you give that right up at this decision.
And what's the, what's the value of that? What's the value, future value of that?
Something that people think will change their mind.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if there's a need in the future, we come back. Now we can't come back.
That's what they're doing. They're taking away your right to come back. They're setting your destiny in the property where you have the right to apply for, that's, that was my point.
Yeah.
You have the right to apply for future...
I know, that's what I thought.
You want to take a five-minute recess or you go figure it out and we do something else?
I mean, if we got our hands tied, it's not fair then...
Life isn't.
Yeah, I realize that. I mean, I felt like I'm being treated a little different. We have other rights. We go through, do this, we meet the setbacks, and then we come here at the last minute, the very last paragraph and the last sentence, they say, oh, no further expansion because...
Do you have plans to expand this?
What's that?
Do you have plans to expand this?
No, I don't at this point, but the same way if someone has a single-family home they built, you can't expand that. Or if the need requires to come back, the same way. I'm not looking to do anything under the radar. If I, if someone or I sell the building and someone else wants to come forward with it, it does put a restrictive value on the, on the property in the future as to what someone could do with it or what value it has to it, whether it could be change of use or other things that...
Well, they could do that. They could come in and propose a change of use. They could propose to tear this whole thing down and build something new, which would be okay, okay as well.
But then, but then they would increase the density if they did that according to this, so they wouldn't be able to do it.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, they couldn't, same size, they couldn't build a brewery on it if it needed more parking. That's increasing the density. So it's kind of, it's not just the apartment that you, I understand you're trying to stop that, but if it gets torn down in 20 years and we've got to put a restaurant in there, we could design the parking there, but there's a restriction on the property that you can't do that because you can't expand. So you're limited to 15 space, spaces too. It's not just the building and the apartment. So that's what I'm, I'm concerned of, if that area changes and, you know, things happen in the future, that's why there. As I say, I don't plan on putting an apartment up there. There, it's storage for now, but to put the restriction on really takes away the use of property not only now, but in the future. If something else comes, same way the train comes through or, or different area, different things happen, it gets rezoned, we're still stuck with that restriction that I can't draw off. That's, that's all I'm asking.
You know, maybe, maybe a better wording that would be is that he could not do any further expansion of the, of the building or the property.
The building envelope?
Unless approved by the planning board.
Under special permit.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair enough.
I don't think you can say under special permit because...
It's not by law.
If it's not a special permit use, then, you know, it's, the zoning bylaw's not going to support it.
All right.
All right. So what is this going to say?
No further expansion.
Unless it comes back before the planning board?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, I certainly agree with that.
Permit.
Hmm?
You can't, you can't do it as a special permit.
Yeah, yeah.
By law.
Okay.
Regulations might change in the future too, and it could be more restricted.
Okay.
All right, I'll move this motion as amended.
A second. All those in favor? Aye.
Oops.
What about the flip side?
All those opposed.
Aye.
All those abstaining.
I abstain. I don't like it. It's too dense.
So wait a minute, what was your vote now?
Two.
We got two, one, and one abstention.
So it passes.
I don't think so.
I think we need either a yea or a nay from you, Ann.
I think you need, you need three. I think two and two, if you doesn't have it.
Well, we don't have a vote from Ann. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
And the, and your no vote was primarily on the conditions?
No. I'm concerned with the density of pedestrian traffic.
So that's from, can I repoll? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, I'm opposed, for the same reasons that Bill reiterated, density, et cetera.
So right now, you don't have, you don't have this...
All right.
I don't think you got to approve it.
Well, it's not actions.
It's two and two.
Sorry?
So the vote was...
It's tied, which means...
Both two and two, so there is no approval.
Two, four, and two against.
I don't think there's an approval there.
Pardon?
Do you think that was approved?
No, it's two and two.
Yeah, I don't see how you could say that was approved. I don't know if that's what you're trying to say.
It's two and two.
Yeah, well, okay.
Aye.
So...
You could come back with a full board.
All right, got that.
Thank you.
Is there anything that would change your mind in the sense of where, like if there was a restriction on that as far as never to be an apartment, would that change your vote or...
I think it's one of the concerns that I have, because I got something, I've got a density now, density would increase by the time I added two apartments above it.
Right, but we're not voting to add apartments, right?
No.
But we're also not voting to preclude the ability to add apartments, either.
Agreed.
But I guess, in the essence of fairness, if that condition was re-read into it, or the motion had that...
We -- I actually, the reality is, we can't do that. You know, it's really...
We can entertain a separate motion, right? Two and two, so if there was a change to the motion, that would change a vote, then we could entertain a second motion.
And what would that second motion be?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, why don't you repoll the board?
On the same motion that's on the floor? So, I will repoll again, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
I'll vote for it. Don't like it?
Thank you.
Okay, three more. Thank you. I do appreciate all the work and effort, I know that's difficult.
We will be back with the garage door.
The what?
The garage door renovation.
That would be very...
Awful.
It would show an effort of good faith.
Such as it might be.
Okay.
Sorry, sweetie.
It's a quarter of 10, and I realize we're on our agenda item for 8:30. And we could be here for a little while, but...
It's hot in here, too, I would say.
Yes. This is a public hearing, accessory dwelling, special permit for 15th 10th Avenue, just to let you know, this is a special permit, so it would require four out of four, since Mr. Bornstein's not here today. Okay? Hi. Just identify yourselves and...
Hi, I'm Maureen O'Brien-Schindler.
I'm Jerry Schindler.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. Why don't you just give us an overview of what you're proposing to do here?
So, what we're proposing to do is, my wife and I purchased her family's home back a few years ago, and we're looking to, you know, take the existing home down. It's had a lot of damage over the years from the storms, there's a lot of, the foundation's been compromised, a lot, you know. So, anyway, we went through, you know, going back a year ago, we went to the conservation and submitted plans to them, and they approved it, you know, based on their recommendations.
They got an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, then we went to the zoning board, and based on, you know, what we needed to do for them, you know, so everything's being done right. Like I said, the home goes back to the early 50s with my wife's family, and we want to keep it, you know, in the home, my wife and I, you know, want to, you know, move down there, and then we got with the...
The zoning board, just, I'm trying to keep the sequency clear here, the zoning board approved?
The zoning board approved what they needed to approve in the...
We have a zoning board decision, so this was a non-conforming lot, is that what this was?
It had a raise and reconstruct.
It is a non-conforming.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a non-conforming.
Yeah.
It was built before the zoning power.
Oh, yes, right. It's one of the larger lots on the street, because my mother and father-in-law, years back, purchased some extra properties, so it's a much wider lot than most of the lots down there. You know, most of them very narrow, this one, this is the widest lot, I think, on the street. And then, going back a year ago, before there was a change with the building inspector, I got with Mr. Duggan, and, you know, he was very helpful and directed my wife and I his, you know, next steps and where to go, and that's how we, you know, went on into building, so. We seeked out all the advice and spoke to all the right people, and went to the different boards and did the approvals that we needed to do, and now we're in front of all of you this evening for the accessory dwelling permit.
And the accessory dwelling is in addition to what you've now built? I'm just, I just want to make sure.
We have, I'm not built anything yet, we're...
Built anything?
No.
Okay, so this is to build the accessory dwelling while you're building primary residences?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Right. It's all new construction.
Gotcha.
You know, tearing down the existing home, that's, you know, well over 70 years old, plus, and putting up the new structure.
Right.
And you should have all the plans there that we have.
And could, just to be clear, could you just point out what this segment here is going to be the accessory dwelling, is that what we're looking at? This is the primary residence, and then this, this sort of box here is the accessory dwelling?
So, this is the primary, this is the primary residence, which has the second floor.
Right.
And then this here is the accessory dwelling.
Which is on the single floor.
Single floor, right.
Okay, okay.
Based on...
Cool.
Is it being elevated?
Yes, it's elevated, the zoning, conservation, so we had it elevated based on the lot, and that's all been approved by the...
Okay.
So, whatever, you know, recommendations were, we complied, and they gave us the permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
And speaking of that, you're elevating it, I think when I was reading the notes that you said, Laura, it's like not on piers elevating it.
No.
You're actually raising the dirt, or the foundation, right?
Correct, correct. And the reason we're doing that, because medically, it looks better for the neighborhood.
Aesthetically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Getting late.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, it looks better. You know, we know most of the neighbors on the streets, and, you know, we're trying to take down a home that needs a lot of work and put up a new home that looks nice.
And how do we get in and out of the accessory dwelling? Where are the two means of use?
Yes.
I see the main door here.
There's a slider in the living room.
And is this the other means right here?
So, where I is...
Here's the door.
Right, so this is the main entrance here.
Right.
And then you also have the back entrance here.
So, is this at grade level, this deck? Or are there stairs?
This is, well, this is, the deck comes out, and then the stairs go down to the ground.
Oh, so it's going out this way?
Yeah.
So, there's a free path that we have to go down?
Yeah, if you look at the back elevation, it shows the deck.
So, right here, that would be the sliding threshold in the accessory dwelling?
Yeah, I did look at that, but it looked like it was all rail, I didn't see how you'd get out. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
But maybe, maybe these are stairs, I wasn't quite sure that that represented stairs, but it must.
There's a slider in the back.
Right, but once you come out on the deck?
Right, then this...
Can you get off that deck?
Yes.
Yeah, the stairs to go to the back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it just looked like it was all caged in. Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
Right. Okay, other questions? Richard?
I wish that it would show, I know, I'm looking at the elevations, but I don't really have a perception of what the dirt is going to be. I mean, that was one of your comments, right, Laura, was the fact that it's elevated up and that there wasn't, was it the parking was an issue?
Well, the parking's a little bit of an issue, and then the lot, you know, the property stores a certain amount of floodwater because of where the elevation is now, so if you fill, that storage goes away, but that's something the Conservation Commission really should be looking at.
Yeah, the conservation, we met with Conservation, they approved it, they asked for a, there's like a small retaining wall that's going to go on the right side of the lot for displacement, and that's what they recommended, and it's, and they approved it based on what they wanted done, and that we did exactly what they asked.
What did you say, the right side, this side?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right on the rise, this 10th Avenue comes up from the water, goes up, it actually comes up like that, and you're right there on the...
We're at the start of the rise, half the...
Brian's house.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, the Conservation Commission has asked for a retaining wall along this property line?
Yeah, right here, like adjacent by the house where the driveway is, because we have a wider lot here.
Yeah.
So, they wanted a wall here just for like, so the water, it's ours displacement calculations.
Mm-hmm.
We had a little calculation report, and it was all filed, and based on that, they approved that.
Okay. And this is all whetling but for a year, right?
Exactly, it's all been marked.
And there is a connection between the accessory dwelling and the main house, correct?
Yes, I know that's required, and I'll show you that, that is great.
Right there, just wanted to make sure that that was okay.
Yes.
And did you mention that was the accessory dwelling you're planning for a family member, or is that for like a mother, father?
Yes, brother.
Oh, brother, okay.
Yeah.
Those would all be family members.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't, it's not part of the regulations, but I was just curious.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You have access on both, on two streets, no? You go all the way back to another street?
It's a paper street, like whatever you call it, it's all conservation, and then...
Right, right, right.
There's a, there's kind of like a, like a, it's 7th Ave, it's...
Where is the parking?
Yeah, I was just going to say, the parking doesn't show.
Well, it's, it's right there for the side of the house, sorry.
To the...
It's not called out.
Yeah, no, it's right here, it's always, you can park four cars here.
Wouldn't that be above the retaining wall, though?
Well, it's going to be on top, well, the retaining wall's only like the side.
Right, but how do you get the...
So, you're going to, you know, you're going to drive up onto the...
So, the earth is going to be filled up to the top of the retaining wall, right?
Correct, right, exactly.
So, you're going to park on top of it?
Right.
Oh, okay, I get it. Okay, I was thinking it was the other way around, like, okay, makes sense now.
Right.
And can you park a car or two in front?
Yeah, if you need to, but we've got plenty of room on the side.
All right.
There's plenty of street here.
On the street? Not on the street, though.
No, not on the street.
No, 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 I'm telling you, there's plenty of parking on that.
Nobody parks on that street.
There was a road sign here, that was, I didn't take a look at, because the retaining wall is in the front, so you're saying it would be like a ramp going up?
No, 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 just on the side, retaining wall's...
No, but this is shown as a retaining wall in the front.
Oh, I don't know, well, that's the house, that's the, like, for the, what do you call it?
Yeah, this here.
How they're grading, how they're bringing the property up, the land up around the house to protect it from floodwaters.
Yeah, but you're not going to be able to get a car up there.
Yeah, the question is, can you drive a car over this, right?
No, no, I mean, it's not, it's not like that. I mean, it's almost like, it's kind of like a slope up.
So, you are going to have a ramp, essentially?
Yeah, it's going to be like...
Right, it's going to be graded up to the top of the wall.
Right.
So, it's going to, you're going to have a wall like this, and you're going to set the top of the wall, and this will be, this will be the side, right? You're going to park here.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
But you'll be able to drive down, this will be a gradual enough grade?
Yes.
That you can do this.
On both, right, exactly.
So, what's the point of the retaining wall there, then?
It was for displacement.
They want to move the water around.
Oh.
Around the lot.
It was a conservation thing that they asked.
Well, they usually try to avoid something called channelizing, but they don't want to force that water into channels, but what this will do, what maybe your engineer was doing, is this gets you out of the floodplain, so...
Well, it does that.
You don't have to put piers, and you don't have to, you know, you probably don't have to pay insurance because you're up higher. It's, you know, FEMA accepts it, so...
How high up is it?
That's what we're talking about.
It starts with a wall, well, you get two different things out, I mean, you can have...
It says zero to three-foot-high stack block retaining wall.
Yeah, the wall's separate from the house, so the grade around the house is five.
Exactly.
And then you get down into that driveway area, and then you have to... So, it's like a natural hill from the house.
Going this way?
Correct.
Right, that I sort of get.
Right.
It's really, how do you get the cars up here, right?
Well, but this isn't like...
I think there's going to be a couple of...
Yeah, I mean, it's just...
I just, you know, kind of...
It's a very gradual slope, it's not even...
Well, it's not going to be gradual where that wall is, it's going to drop down like a couple of feet here, because this is like...
Unless you regrade the front, right?
This is 12 here, and this is, I don't know, I don't think this is going to be...
I mean, I engineered one for all of that, like, with the conservation, you know, there's only, I mean, I'm not in the business...
No, we're just trying to understand how you, how, because we need to make sure you have enough parking, right?
Right.
So, if this is the parking space, the question is, how do you get past this retaining wall?
Right.
And the only way to do that, coming from the front, is to grade it up so that it's flush or above that wall, right? And I don't know that you've got enough distance, it's 15 feet there, and if it's a three-foot wall, that's a one in five slope, right?
Yeah, what do you do on the side?
It's a 20% slope.
Yeah, there's also a parking spot that's going to be here in the front of the accessory dwelling as well.
This look like you could fit, this is about 25 by 30, so you can't quite fit two cars stacked here.
No, it wouldn't be two cars, yeah, it's only one car.
Well, I think you can fit, you can't fit two side by side there?
Oh, you can, I mean, you can.
Yeah, you can fit two side by side in front of the accessory dwelling, but I think that's the only parking that I see.
Where do you put two side by side?
Maybe you need to get your engineer to just show the parking, and then, I think you can fit two cars here. Well, they're going to be much bigger than that, but here...
So, that, is that the existing?
That's existing, so that's all that's going to be gone?
It's all coming out.
That's coming down, huh? So, they're talking about parking in here?
Yep.
Yeah, they can do that, but this whole distance is about, I believe this whole distance is about 15 feet?
No, it's 15 feet from here to there.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
About double that, about 30.
This is 30 feet, but you couldn't necessarily quite fit two cars in there.
Where?
You know, like, one back, another.
No, you could put two for the accessory dwelling.
Right.
The question is, is this really accessible parking, right?
But this is a gradual slope that comes up.
It's this here.
I mean, it is now, it's when they put the wall in, what's the slope going to look like?
I think you need to get the engineer to show me where the parking is going to go.
You know, the parking is a piece of this, I'm sure he can do it, it would be the same.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to explain this, just so I can try to get things...
I think I get it, I think this is the issue, right? Here's the street out here, right? And you got to come up, and that's three feet, right? And that's 15, right? That's a 20% slope, is what that is, right? That's what that is, which is pretty severe for a drive, particularly wintertime driving and all that. I mean, I don't know at the end of the day whether that's good, bad, or different, but, and it feels like, in order to do that, you actually have to have enough cover to go over the wall, right? And it feels like, in order to do that, you actually have to have enough cover to go over the wall, right? Because you don't wanna be hitting the wall with your car.
And the wall has to be able to support a car driving over it, and everything inside it.
But the wall's not gonna be, the wall's gonna be like on the side. It's, here's the wall, and it's a slope up with a...
But he's showing the retaining wall here, that's what I'm saying. They've actually showed it coming around the corner, coming all the way to here. That's what this drawing shows.
In Weston, there's no, no room beside it.
Right. So I think we need your engineer to sort of resolve how this piece is gonna work.
You mean this wall right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, so the, the sidewall is not the issue, it's the wall in the front.
The retaining wall comes all the way around and comes all the way here, right? That's the way this is shown. It turns the corner, comes this way.
Yep.
Right, so that's what he's shown. And that's why we're saying, how do, how do you get cars in here, right? With this wall here. If the wall wasn't there, yeah, I agree, right? But, but it appears that they've shown that the retaining wall's coming across the front as well. So I...
And I know it's not the case, it's not a retaining wall.
Tara, we'll just have to go come back with the engineer.
Well, then we need to get him to revise this drawing, because he's showing it with the retaining wall. And this, was this...
There is a retaining wall up against the house.
Well, he should have gone all the way across.
Right, but there is one up against the house, based on the conservation required in regard to the front zone. So there's one up against the house.
Well, I, I would see why, I mean, I could understand why he continued it, then, is that he's trying to get, get the site elevation to a particular site, right? And if he's got a big drop here, he needs retaining wall, otherwise he won't be able to keep the soil there, so... We probably just need him to clarify this detail, to say, how do we get cars up there? And what does it look like? And if, if there's no wall there, then he should modify the drawing.
Or the other option, I live, if this is to still have the retaining wall, and then, right in front of the retaining wall, like, don't have, don't have any dirt. Have that be just gravel, or, or it actually says concrete. So you'd park, like, almost like the bumper would be up to the wall, meaning that...
Yeah, I just don't know if that's enough.
It says...
And what that means to backing out onto the street.
What, do you need twelve?
I think you lose about a foot there.
What do you need, Laura, twelve?
My car is eighteen, and it's like a mid-sized car.
Okay.
Um, and you're going to the building as opposed to, to the wall, so I think you lose maybe a foot there.
Right, the fifteen feet's to the corner of the building, not to the wall, so you're gonna lose a foot, foot and a half there. So I, I think it would be better if we just got that clarified, right?
I mean, it doesn't have to be engineered, it's gotta be just a sketch showing what the wall...
Well, I think, where did this plan go? Was this something that went to the CONCOM? Yeah, this plan approved by the CONCOM, right?
Right.
So the Conservation Commission approved this, so if it changes, it's probably gotta go back there.
Yep.
Okay, I don't understand why this, the accessory apartment, accessory dwelling is here, the proposed two-story dwelling is there. This, all this stuff goes away. Why can't a car sort of parallel park here, and you can have three cars there?
Oh, you can.
And then that would preclude what we're trying to deal with in terms of the slope and the retaining wall. So you end up with your four spaces.
I'm just trying to deal with what people are telling me.
Oh, okay.
I'm not trying to design this, I'm just trying to make, make sure it makes sense.
And, and, you know, I don't think my car, my Jeep is eighteen feet, Suburbans are eighteen feet.
Yeah.
Oh, it probably is.
Well, you have to plan for standard size, right?
Right, so I think they're more like ten or twelve feet. But if you had a car parked in here, and then you had three here...
Well, that's pretty tight for three, right? Because standard width is...
Well, let's see, his, his engineer's gonna use like engineering principles and all that.
All right.
I mean, we're not wedded to having to park here, as long as you can get four cars on the side.
Four cars somewhere, yeah.
How many do you want, or something?
Four.
You need four, four parking spaces.
Two for the main and two for the accessory.
Right, two and two, yeah.
So, yeah, I think that's all we...
Back to back, right?
They could do back to back.
As long as you get four in and you get into it.
They could do tandem, yeah.
Yeah.
But we didn't think that there was enough, like, for in front of the, the accessory dwelling to have tandem spaces. That's what Laura was saying.
And Ann was saying, well, is there enough to put three abreast, and then put a parallel park spot right here or something? What you may run into is just the, the walkway access into the house and all that, but... You know what? I think we should leave it to you and your engineers to figure it out.
Okay.
And just...
Does, does everything else, um, any other questions?
Uh, well, let's, let's see if we've got anything else. How about, how about Septic? What's the plan?
Sur.
You're on Town Sur, so you're up here.
Yep.
And Diddy Grass. And the sort of look and feel, it's all gonna be the same, it's gonna look like one house, essentially.
I mean, that was, that's the, that's the goal.
Okay.
How come you don't have any windows or anything on the left elevation? I mean, it's...
Um, because, you know, the house is next door, and that neighborhood, like...
Right next to it.
Yeah, it's close, you know, so you have more privacy. And the house besides is very high. It's like three stories high, so they can look down.
I, I, you know, you do whatever it is that you wanna do, however, in terms of light, in terms of anything, this is what I do for a living.
Oh, okay.
And I would strongly recommend that you think about having windows, even though you could cover them with something that, to allow the light to come in. That it would be just very, very, very dark. Think long and hard about what you're doing.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Um, any other questions?
No, the exception to parking, I think it's a go.
Right.
Do you have any questions from the public?
All right.
So how, what's, what's the next step in the process?
You're gonna hear it in two seconds.
Yeah, come sit down.
I, I move to continue the public hearing for the accessory dwelling. Special permit for fifteen Tenth Avenue until July thirteenth, twenty seventeen, at nine P M. To clarify the parking, the meeting on the thirteenth will be at the Public Safety Complex. What? Do you know that there is no audio up there?
Is that the police station up there? Yeah, right now, that's where we have planned because of the, um, Toll Brothers.
Okay, so we need a bigger...
Okay.
We need a much bigger room.
You need a bigger room, and there were over a hundred people there the other night, and they didn't have room for them, and there was no sound system. So that's something you need to keep in mind, is a sound system of some... You know, good luck with that.
Anyway, I second the motion.
All is in favor.
Aye. Does he need to sign something? No? Okay, all right.
So we just need that clarified, and then come back on the thirteenth, and...
Thirteenth, uh, so...
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving along. We're only an hour and ten minutes behind tonight.
We're catching up, though.
Now we're getting...
Public hearing, work in Scenic Road, seven twenty-four Countryway. Proposed work to remove a nine-foot, it's Norway maple.
Looks like you're standing up this way.
How you doing?
Hi.
Mike, Mike Breen, uh, from the Highway Department and Public Grounds.
Tell us what you wanna do.
Um, there's a Norway maple on seven twenty-four Countryway. Do you have, do you have pictures?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, there's a crack, there's a crack through the center of the tree. It was one-fourth inch, um, a year ago, now it's like three-eighths inch, which is...
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I have it on my phone, too.
This is a better picture than the one I have here.
Yeah, but more concerning is the sidewalk is being pushed up, um, and it's a hazard. There's, there is no immediate danger for the tree falling. I had, uh, Bartlett Tree Experts, Abraham Monhan, he's a certified arborist, take a look at it. He wasn't, um, concerned of it immediately falling, but he did say, um, there were some concerns about the crack in the tree. And it is quite a large tree, it's nine-foot, um...
It's a pretty tree.
Circumference, so...
Did he say it can't be saved?
Yeah, he didn't think it had much life left in it, but he said he was more concerned about the sidewalk pushing up than he was more of the crack, that it was, uh, an immediate danger to come down. But he, he did say that it should be on our list to take it down.
How old is the tree?
That I don't know, I can find out when I cut it down. And it is, it is causing, if you, if you go up to the site, it is pushing the sidewalk right up.
It's dangerous.
It is dangerous.
It's a public safety issue that needs to be addressed.
Yes.
There you go.
Yep.
It's very simple.
Questions?
And the tree, it's in the public way?
Yes.
I have no problem with taking the tree down.
Need a motion to move to remove the tree?
Let me ask if there's anybody here who wants to make a comment? Okay, no public comment.
Well, did you speak to the, obviously, the owners of the house?
Yes, they, they were the ones who were concerned about it, you know, causing a problem with limbs falling. And I had National Grid come up and cut all the dead out of the tree. And they're still concerned because of that big crack that it could cause, um, some harm to, like I said, safety to any pedestrians walking by, if it does split.
Okay. I, for one, would be in favor of saving the tree if it were possible to save it and moving the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Um, but if it's not possible to save the tree, then, then I suppose it's time to remove it.
And so the, just to be clear, the, the person at the house, is that you, sir?
Yes.
Uh, and you're in favor of removing it?
Yes, um, actually, the town has been, uh, the thirty-seven years we've been living there, the town has been very proactive about tending the tree. It is very old, it's very huge. Uh, they even cut out a huge enormous spur, if that's what like terminology is, a number of years ago. It was a small tree in its own right. But the branches, dead branches continue to fall down. I don't know if you have a copy of the letter that I sent to the selectman, that a huge limb, about ten feet long, came down decently, right, parallel in the sidewalk, obviously, where people block and sometimes park.
But we have a professional opinion that says this tree is not sevable?
Yes.
All right, have we got a motion?
Yep. Move to close the Scenic Road Act and Public Shade Tree Public Hearing, and approve the removal of an approximately nine-foot circumference Norway maple tree within the Countryway right-of-way in front of House seven-two-four for the Town of Situate Public Grounds Department, as the roots of the tree are creating a hazardous buckling situation with the sidewalk, and public safety is a concern.
Second.
Can we also modify that and say that the tree is dying, is not sevable?
And the tree is on its way out.
Rapidly approaching a fireplace.
Second is amended?
Yes.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mike, take a look at the tree in front of Alan Otto. No, it's coming down.
Is it?
Yeah, I mean, it is coming down. Big branch fell off the other day.
Okay, we're now, now only an hour and five minutes behind.
Glad to help you, buddy, get back on track.
Okay, uh, let's see. Placement of permanent screening, seven Blanchard Farm, and review of the stormwater. Okay, where are we? Hopefully, we can finalize all of this.
These are two feet long, three hours.
Yep, as were you. Okay. So, that's where things stand.
Sure. At the last meeting, I think I presented that the swale had been constructed across the back of Lot seven. We finally issued our statement, um, the sign-off that was required prior to occupancy, as part of the permit with Blanchard Farms, that the grading, um, was complete on the site, that it complied with the design. We went out, we did an as-built plan, that plan is what you see up here. Uh, depicts the grading on the backs of, um, Lots seven, eight, nine, and ten. We looked at the swale kind of all the way along the back of Whittier Drive. We ran some as-built cross-sections, um, that got submitted. Merrill responded to that with their first letter, um, which, I, I'm gonna be very general here, said that the, what was built didn't comply with the design plan. After that, I spoke with Laura, I've spoken with Peter Palmieri, and we issued some follow-up calculations that, you know, what we submitted in the as-built is of much greater capacity than the design plan. Uh, the swale is deeper than what was originally designed, the swale is wider than what was originally designed. Uh, it meets the intent of what was originally designed. We feel that there's no, no potential here for water to run across that, uh, lot line as it had in the past. Again, everything we've done really pinpointed to, uh, a stockpile that blocked this swale naturally on Lot seven. That has been removed, it's been regraded, um, to mimic what, what was there prior to Blanchard Farms. To be actually better than what was there prior to Blanchard Farms.
Well, I thought maybe we could hear from Peter while we're at it.
Sure, I'll get it, Palmer, from Merrill Engineers and Land Swears. We did review the calculations, um, we do think that, um, it has, as it stands now, based on the cross-sections we were provided, it does have the capacity, um, for the hundred-year storm. We did recommend that, um, due to the irregular shape, irregular cross-sections, potential for vegetation to grow and so on, that, um, that a, a small berm be bu- built, actually. And by small, I mean inches, maybe six inches, but in this area here, just to, to prevent, um, any flow from heading across the property line by the stone wall. There was, there is kind of a low area in here, um, it, it, based on the calculations, it's not gonna overtop again, but with, with hydraulic calculations, even though you, you come up with flows and elevations to the tenth of a foot, there's a lot of assumptions in there. One of the assumptions being that the, the swale's gonna be maintained, which is probably the biggest one, but I think any drainage design needs to factor safety, and that's what I'm suggesting, is creating, um, again, a berm in this area here, may actually carry down into here, so that you have a minimum depth, depth of one foot. Um, and, and I think that, um, the problem area is right, basically, in this area, uh, be, to the rear of Lot eight. As you get down into Lot seven, it's somewhat more well-defined. I do think, it's hindsight, but a drainage easement would have been a good approach. Um, it's probably too late in the process now to get that, um, because there is a possibility that the swale, something's gonna happen to the swale. Homeowners do crazy things, uh, they do things they think is right, but not necessarily in the intent, but, um, I think we do need to create, um, somewhat of a berm there. And we met with Greg out in the field, and I, I thought we had agreed, uh, my understanding was, we, we agreed to do that, um, and we, um, would see a plan submitted to the board with a, a plan view, as well as a cross-section of what that eventual swale would look like.
Okay, great. And is that the case?
Partially, yes. So, yeah, we did, we did in the field, we did talk about constructing that berm. I do wanna remind the board, we had this same exact discussion about a berm in that exact location, uh, in April of two thousand sixteen. I came up with a design plan, this was submitted to the board. The applicant on Lot eight was required to hire Amory Engineers to review this. Amory Engineers, back in April of two thousand sixteen, reviewed this and approved this, and this is what was constructed. And it was designed as a six-inch-high berm that exists today. There were pictures of that submitted to this board back then, I'll pass them around again, but you see, there's a berm.
Yep.
It's an earthen berm, it, we looked at it the other day, uh, it could be brought up, I think Peter's recommending that it be brought up to a foot in height. Again, what's out there contains the, contains the water as it's built right now in the hundred-year storm event. It does provide freeboard, it does not provide as much freeboard as Merrill is proposing, but it's what Amory at that time had recommended. I'm here really for Lot seven, I've been hired by the property owners at Lot seven. This berm is on Lot eight. I do not know the property owner at Lot eight at this point in time, I have not spoken with them about this. This is something that would need to go through the owners of Lot eight, if we were gonna be doing work on that lot. I can tell you that on Lot seven, we have a foot of, a foot of depth in that swale all the way across Lot seven.
How did it do this past Friday night when it rained buckets? Two inches of rain? How did everything work out?
Be, be a butters are in the audience.
We were fine.
We didn't have any water.
We were fine.
Is that the case, Quinn's as well?
We have no comment.
You have no comment, or you didn't see it?
I, I didn't see it, it was nighttime, I didn't go out with a flashlight and inspect. The only comment I have is, Mr. Morris indicated that, uh, they've established a man-made swale, but according to the plans, your natural swale was twenty-five feet off the wall. So my question is, why is a man-made swale made five feet off the wall?
Well, the, the primary question here is, the stormwater system as it's designed today, is it gonna contain and manage the stormwater on the site? And I'm not differentiating between Lot seven and Lot eight, because this whole thing is going from Lot ten all the way down to Lot six, right? And I'm still looking to the developer who designed this entire stormwater system, to say that it will contain the hundred-year storm from Lot ten all the way down. I guess that's my question, that has always been my question, and I, I was hoping we were gonna get an answer to that tonight.
I think, referring to the Merrill letter of June twentieth, two thousand seventeen, um, it appears that they ran calculations for the hundred-year storm event. The calculation showed a depth of flow of zero-point-four-one feet. It shows that the capacity is there with what's out there today.
So you're comfortable, you're telling me that you've designed...
I'm gonna defer to the Merrill, uh, this was originally designed, we submitted, yes.
I'm asking you first.
Yes, we submitted...
We'll get the Merrill in a minute.
We submitted, we submitted design calculations to this board...
Yes.
To design this thing here for the hundred-year storm event back in March of this year. Uh, we had designed it as a minimum swale of two feet wide by eight inches deep. That's what the design plan was out here. When we went out with the contractor, we staked out the center line of that swale, we gave him the grades of it, and we said, make sure water doesn't go across that lot line. Build it higher on the side, build it wider, build it bigger. This is the minimum design. That minimum design, based on our calculations, was for the hundred-year storm event. What got built was bigger than our design, that's why I believe it contains the hundred-year storm event.
From one end to the other?
Yes.
I'm not talking about Lot seven's swale, okay, I'm talking about the whole thing.
From one end to the other, correct.
Because as, as I understand it, both of you have concurred that there's a swale, it starts somewhere around Lot eight. But upstream of that, it's not a swale, it's something else, right? I'm not sure what it is.
Natural, natural topography, it's a, it's not a defined channel on the backs of Lots ten or nine or... It's not a defined channel on the backs of Lots 10 or 9 or the top part of Lot 8, but it's the topography in general.
That Peter area is contained on the, it doesn't flow off into Whittier.
No.
So, it flows downstream through the channel all the way to the level spreader, or whatever you call it.
The drainage parcel.
In Lot 6, right? And Peter, are you comfortable with that as well?
Yes. Again, my only hesitation was that the cross-sections, and this is why, again, I go back to the freeboard. It's obviously the board's decision, and the calculations here work, and we viewed this as the worst of the cross-sections. My only concern is that I think there's a lower area here, and that's why if you... I'm sorry?
A flat area.
A flatter area. It's difficult to explain, but it's flatter. It doesn't have the relief, and there's a lot of vegetation where, I mean, I'm not sure what the elevations are. And again, that was the suggestion I had, and I understand that apparently there's no control right now on Lot 8 with, as far as Greg is concerned, but is that if you mound it up, you're going to, you're not going to allow the possibility that there's going to be a lower area in there. You can't take cross-sections 100% of the lot, so that's why I'm suggesting a little bit of freeboard or a little bit of factor of safety in there.
So, you're comfortable on Lot 10 and Lot 9 that it's feeding down and not across to the lots?
Correct. Without question. Yes.
Okay. Okay, and there was, well, I sent a couple of notes back. I don't know if you forwarded those or not, Laura, but...
With the questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, and you got answers back. You saw them?
If I did, I haven't seen them.
Okay.
Okay.
I think they've seen each other's answers and...
Yes, so...
And I think the Quinns have seen those also.
Yeah. No, I kind of tried to reconcile all 3 of these reports into these 3 questions, basically, right? One is, does it contain the 100-year storm from end to end, right? And what I'm hearing is, both of our experts think that's the case, right? There was some discrepancy in some of your calculations on what the minimum velocity was. I don't know if you've reconciled that or not.
No, I mean, I...
I think Peter suggested it was 13.8, and you suggested it was 27.
I think, I think it's the 13.8 or whatever. Just because we ran a computer analysis, and one of the things that you have to take into consideration is, the flow gets shallower, the velocity drops. So, as the velocity drops, the capacity of the channel goes down.
Right.
And so, you can't take a cross-section somewhere, take, figure out the velocity there, and then carry it all the way up.
Right.
So, we took what we thought was the worst-case cross-section. But again, the capacity is still there.
And still have enough capacity to handle 100-year storm.
Correct.
Okay.
May I add to that?
Yes.
We also provided a HydroCAD analysis of the as-built conditions on Lots 7, 8, 9, and 10. That as-built HydroCAD in the 100-year storm event yielded 8.79 cubic feet per second going, being directed toward that swale. Based on Peter's calculation, that swale has capacity of 13.8 CFS at that smallest choke point, if you will.
Right. So, we have...
So, you have the capacity.
And should have some freeboard there, too.
Yes.
That's about 2 tenths of a foot.
2 tenths of a foot. That's not a lot.
Well, I mean, I like to be safe, so that's why I was just, I thought it should go a little deeper.
Okay.
But it is the 100-year storm, I mean...
No, but that's the design standards, so...
Yes.
Okay. 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 Are there questions? Yes.
Question I have is, the, I have 2 questions. The numbers that we just banded about here, could you explain to me, from Lot 9 going to Lot 8, going to Lot 7, going to the retention pond, what the pitch of that swale is?
Sure. I think Greg's done the numbers on that.
Sure. We analyzed kind of a couple of different sections. I mean, from one end to the other, just shy of 1%, I think we had 0.09 as a percentage. We did look at some sections, you know, in between that. We had .4 as a percentage.
Can you point out the sections you're talking about, Greg?
Sure. So, from one end to the other, from here to the start of that swale, on Lot 8, this was .009 was the as-built.
So, slightly less than 1%?
Slightly less than 1%. 0.098 from the beginning to the end. Between Sections A and B, there was a .44, so half of a percent, just shy of half a percent. And then between B and C, we had 1.4% in that upper section.
And the DEP design standard for this?
DEP design standard is to design it essentially as flat as possible.
But no more than...
More than 5%.
5%.
The maximum. There is no minimum.
And do you have a sense for what the slope is upstream of that swale?
I can, I can scale it off. I mean, it's not a, again, it's not a channelized flow above that. It's just surface topography. The start of the swale here at elevation 60, we're going up 200 feet. We're at 61 and 1/2. So, I mean, it's slightly shy of 1%.
Okay. To answer your question?
It does answer my question. I'm not an engineer, but the engineer I retained indicated that the ideal slope would be 2% and not 1%.
Well, I think I've provided both of you with the Hodge report, right? So, I'd be interested in your take on that and sort of reconciliation on that.
Mr. Chairman, I could offer that, I'm not sure there's any ideal for a swale. It depends on what you want, the purpose of the swale is. I think the DEP, to make it as flat as possible, that's to promote infiltration and infiltration as far as improving water quality.
And prevent scour, too, right?
Exactly. Well, at 2%, you're not going to get much scour unless it's a fairly well-defined channel. But you can go up to 5% because of grass. It offers quite a bit of resistance, so if you had it 2 foot deep with grass on the belt bottom, that would be great. If it was 2 inches deep with grass, you know, even, you wouldn't scour very much. So, I don't think there's any hard and fast rule as far as velocity. And I think, I think the thing we're trying to look at is that the swale functions as designed, and it doesn't cause any flooding to the abiding property. So, if you can do that by elevation difference, geometry of the swale, depth of the swale, that's what you need to be looking at instead of, not instead of, but that's the bottom line. So, that's all I could offer.
And it sounds like we have that bottom line at this point.
I do. Again, I still think that we could use a little bit of...
A little more depth.
Yeah.
A little more freeboard.
Exactly.
Okay. The thing I note about your engineers' report is, it was done before this work has been completed now. So, I would, I would expect, I don't know if they're interested in reviewing it or not, but they would reach a similar conclusion, because it seems like we've reached the same conclusion, that we now have a system that will manage 100-year storm on-site.
My understanding is that a lot of that flooding had to do with also that there was some stockpile as you went down the swale, and it really created quite a poignant situation that depth was more than it would be now. I didn't see it, so I don't know, but...
I would say that was a contributing factor. I think it may have been that we didn't have enough of a defined swale for this whole area either, but it looks like we're there at this point. Any other questions?
Yeah. My second question was, it still remains unanswered. The original natural swale was 25 feet off the stone wall, and the man-made swale is 5 feet off the stone wall. Now, Mr. Merrill Engineering, I'm sorry.
Peter.
Mr. Palmieri just identified his concern about the upkeep of the swale. Well, I believe the owners of property 7 just installed plantings along the boundaries, and they are almost in the swale. So, if the swale is 5 feet off the wall, and these plantings are growing, they're going to grow into the swale. So, my question was, why was a man-made swale made 5 feet off the wall when it was originally planned and identified as 25 feet off the wall?
Do you have a response to that, Greg?
I did visit the site just before I came here tonight. I didn't get a chance to print it out, but I did see some of the plantings up past my phone, unless you have photos of this.
Okay.
Yes, some of the plantings, they went in the embankments of the swale, and the embankments are still intact. They did not go in the center line of the swale. I don't see them impeding the flow in any way.
Could it even potentially improve?
It could with some of the water uptake, with it being at such a flat slope. Yeah, I think you will get a little bit of uptake in it.
But my question still remains. Why was the man-made swale made 5 feet off the wall in the no-work zone?
Right. I don't think we've heard an answer to that, but at least I think we've got an answer to whether we're managing stormwater or not.
Right.
And that's, I think that's our primary objective here, right?
Well, our primary objective is to...
Is to make sure we don't run stormwater onto Whittier Drive properties. And I think at this point, we have that licked.
So, that's a question not to be answered?
Well, if Greg could answer that, I don't know if he can or not.
Well, that was a boundary established when this board approved the definitive subdivision plan, and now that's changed.
No, it doesn't sound like it's a boundary we're going to be able to re-establish, so I don't know the answer to that question, but the important part is that we're managing the stormwater on this, right?
Okay, Mr. Morris, answer the question.
Sure.
Feel free to.
Sure. The original subdivision did show a tree line or a limit of work, if you will, at the back of all of those lots. That was on Lots 8 and 9. You know, that limit of work is approximately 20 feet out from the stone wall. On Lot 7, it was cleared right up to the stone wall. That's not what our original design showed. Our original design calculations, though, did show that all of the lots were going to be fully developed, because in the future, we don't know what's going to happen on these lots. If people are going to cut trees down, if they're going to add additional lawn areas, that was taken into account in our original drainage calculations. We didn't propose that as a no-disturb buffer or easement of any kind or any sort of restriction. It was always calculated in the calculations as being a developed single-family lot for its entirety. So, now that we are trying to reconcile this after the work's been done, after that buffer zone was cleared, that's how it plays into the landscape. That's how it plays into the house location and what was constructed out there. That's the location that was shown on that design plan.
How far off the lot is the house on Lot 7?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
How far off the boundary line is the house on Lot number 7?
I have no idea. Do you have a...
31 feet.
It complies with the zoning bylaw. I know that, which has a 30-foot rear yard setback. It's in compliance.
Okay. And let me ask you a question on this, too. In terms of the going-forward maintenance of that swale, who takes on that responsibility? And where is it captured?
Sure. That swale where it's constructed, you know, it's going to be vegetated. On the backside of it is landscape and trees, but the center line of that swale and everything on the house side is going to be proposed as lawn. So, the homeowner will be in charge of maintaining the lawn surface and mowing the lawn surface.
And does it show up on the homeowner's deed, or is there any sort of obligation to continue to maintain?
No, there really shouldn't be any maintenance to it. It's not receiving roadway runoff or anything. It's not receiving any large sediment load. The only maintenance associated would, again, be cutting the lawn at a fairly frequent basis, making sure that, you know, fill be placed into it or change in grade be put into it.
Yeah, I guess the maintenance I was speaking of was not necessarily that, but to continue to maintain it as a swale, so it doesn't get, doesn't become...
Sure. So, I mean, the town, so moving forward, the town does have the stormwater bylaws, so if there's any changes to the drainage system, a filing would be required through the stormwater bylaw. This is a documented drainage path at this point.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions from the board?
Nope. They were over there.
Oh, yes.
Hi, owner of Lot 7. What is this?
Could you identify your...
Patrick Hunter, Lot 7 here. What is this stormwater bylaw that Greg just mentioned? What is that? All that?
The town has a stormwater bylaw that manages the, that requires the management of stormwater on lots, individual lots.
What does that mean, I guess, if this swale isn't maintained or something happens?
Well, this, this was a subdivision. This was a subdivision that was permitted through our regulations, and part of that subdivision requires the management of stormwater from the new development, such that it doesn't increase stormwater flow to adjoining properties. So, the design of it was designed to capture that stormwater and put it to the drainage parcel, which is Lot 5 or 6?
It's actually a drainage parcel.
Drainage parcel is next to Lot 6, right?
Yeah.
So, those are, those are ongoing requirements of the subdivision going forward. There are also all kinds of other drainage in the, in the street, and individual houses have drainage requirements for their downspouts, et cetera.
Fair. I guess, well, I guess my main question is, would that raise any issue with the stormwater?
Probably if you blocked it off, your neighbor.
So, this could be ongoing type of perpetuity here?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we've had it in the past where stormwater systems like this, somebody's inadvertently, I don't think maliciously, but inadvertently decided to create a level area or something and blocked off a swale. But the problem is, the swale's designed to move the water from all these lots to the drainage parcel.
Isn't it within the homeowners' association, though?
This swale here is on private property, so it's not. The remainder of the drainage system, the basin, the roadway drainage, that's all in the homeowners' association, yes.
And that may be something we want to try to figure out how to address in the future.
Right.
I think Peter's recommendation of a drainage easement was probably what we should have set up here.
Right.
In hindsight. Okay. No other questions? Do we have a motion?
We have one other...
Make a motion.
Motion for what?
I, I have one. I didn't seem to have brought it down here, but it had to do with a whole other approach to this. So, I think if you want a motion at this point, this has gone in some different directions than where I thought it was going to, so...
Do we just want to move to accept?
Yeah, well, I, I guess I'm satisfied that we've got a...
So I think if you want a motion at this point, this has gone in some different directions than where I thought it was going to, so.
Do we just want to move to accept?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm satisfied that we've got a permanent solution here. If, you know, I guess I'd like to hear the board, whether you guys think differently. I mean, I do think we might want to take Peter's suggestion to add the...
Absolutely.
The free board.
Right.
Or add the depth, if you will.
That would have to be part of a decision or...
I think it would have to be part of a vote, right?
But the other part of all of this, our discussion, was the replacement of permanent screening.
Screening, yeah, that's a separate issue.
That's a, hold separate, okay.
Or at least I assume it would be.
The motion that I had had to do with...
I mean, I do think we might want to take Peter's suggestion to add the...
Absolutely.
The free board.
Right.
Or add the depth, if you will.
That would have to be part of a decision or...
I think it would have to be part of a vote, right?
But the other part of all of this, our discussion, was the replacement of permanent screening.
Screening, yeah, that's a separate issue.
That's a, hold separate, okay.
Or at least I assume it would be.
The motion that I had had to do with doing something, you know, as far as the swale and it would also clean up some of the stockpiled soil that's back, towards the back of lot eight. You know, there's a pile of stony soil that's just sitting under some trees, it's probably not doing the trees any good and it's almost an eyesore. So that could be taken, you know, rocks cleaned out of it and made into this berm, which might be like a landscape feature around those trees that are still there. I thought that's what we had all agreed on or is that different?
We did discuss that in the field and I think that berm is easily done. I think it's redundant. I'm not going to disagree with Peter's recommendations on it, but it is located entirely on lot eight.
Laura? Yeah. Excuse me. I just have one question. You mentioned when I spoke to you this week about the curve around that bank of trees between lot eight and seven, that they were going, or that they both had concurred that they were going to construct a wider curve that would go further in, as you put it, to lot seven. And that's when I asked you if there was any plans drawn up and you said, "Not as of yet," but I believe that's what the board is waiting for, the plan. So now tonight, we're not sure what work is going to get done, we're, you know...
No, no, I think things aren't quite that, you know, unjelled. I think they're a lot more gelled than that and the motion was going to be to get this plan. Now, the only obstacle right now is that we don't seem to have a connection with the owner of lot eight and whether or not, you know, this goes to him or it goes back before him. And I would also want to say, obviously, obviously to me, the owners of lot seven and eight would have to be involved in exactly where this swale goes, understand where it is, what it's for, and if there's some ground cover that they want to see on it, you know, that would be, you know, something, something to talk about. But it seems to me like this is all part of the basic design of the subdivision and that, you know, maybe there were some circumstances that couldn't have been foreseen, like the stormwater going off towards Whittier Drive, but it's really all part of the subdivision and I would, I would go back to the developer and look to them.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's exactly where we should go.
The developer has no rights on lot eight. It's been conveyed out. This board has reviewed an as-built plan and hired an engineer to review it of their own choosing, who recommended it be released. The covenants have been released. It's been conveyed at this point, so you need to talk to the property owner on lot eight. You know, there is a bond, there is a bond for the remaining roadwork.
We're going to talk to the property owner anyway, but I mean, in terms of the funding, I'm not sure the property owners should have to pay for the design and for actual construction of this thing. But anyway, I think I have to run back to the office and find this.
Okay. Is there any other, any other information that we need to hear at this point? Have we seen a sort of a, or have you worked out a solution on the planting and screening plan? Has that happened?
We had a meeting last week, Laura, ourselves, Jackie and the hunters, and they put, the trees, I think the trees look great.
They are. They're tall, they're wide.
Looks like the first one.
Good.
Hit the lights out.
Wait till they see us.
Okay.
And just a clarification, this was, originally it was just grass, right? It was the high grass? So they put the trees behind it?
This is, this is lot seven.
Okay.
Lot seven, not that.
I don't think this is the parking driveway.
Oh, the driveway, I'm thinking of the driveway one, yeah.
Yeah, just, but they had a lot of screening, they had to plan along the property line.
Okay.
Okay. Let's give Laura a minute.
Do we want to, how about this Form A?
Is somebody put the Form A here?
There he is, he's sitting right there.
You're the Alpha Omega for our evening here.
I just forgot to put here, "I move..." All right. "...to find that..." I move to find that a natural swale at the back of lot seven and eight was eliminated with the development of eight Blanchard Farm estates and when there was heavy rain, stormwater has flowed onto adjacent properties. The proposed mitigation consisted of a shallow swale connected to the level spreader north of the detention basin. The town's consulting engineer believes the swale should be deeper with the berm constructed on one side. The planning board agrees with this approach and requires that this swale be shown on the plan to be submitted to the consulting engineer for his approval. At that point, it shall be constructed by the contractor. This work shall be completed within three weeks. While the planning board may pursue the issuance of fines in accordance with the Town of Situate noncriminal disposition by law.
I mean, that, just for clarification, that's on the back of eight, right? Is what you said?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven's where all the new plantings just went in.
Right.
Right.
And we have more than a foot on the back of lot seven, all the way across, based on the as-built.
So you think it can just be on eight? I mean, is that...
I thought we were talking about free board at the top at lot eight.
Okay.
But...
Isn't that what we said?
Seven and eight.
Well, we said that the natural swale had been eliminated at seven and eight, right?
And now it's been reconstructed.
This is the area I was talking about. I thought where we needed the reference.
Right there.
Lot eight.
Lot eight.
Okay.
So take out seven?
So we can take out any reference to lot seven and just make it lot eight.
And you guys on lot seven?
Yes.
And I know how difficult this is for you, a new homeowner, you're in a new place and, boy, you've been inundated with more than just rain. So hang in there and just don't pile your lawn clippings in the swale.
And don't fill the swale either.
Right. Seriously.
Appreciate it.
Right. Somebody else I know in another subdivision, right, clean it. Planted a garden in theirs. I mean, come on. But welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience. It's appreciated, really. We all have to go along to get along.
You have any changes, Bill?
No, I mean...
Do we think three weeks is the right time or should it be, you know, realistic and maybe it should be longer than that?
I think this has gone on long enough.
We need to get things planted.
We need to get it done.
Right? We need to get it vegetated, too, right?
Well, the vegetation is in.
Is there, yeah.
But, but actually, yeah.
But what's they get in here?
In the swale and up on, you know, people's lawns.
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to move is amended?
As amended, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Laura, when you left, we were just talking about the screening.
Okay.
Do you have any other sort of input or update on where we can...
Um, yeah, I got an email from the owners of lot eight and I don't remember if I shared that with everybody, but they'd be okay with a fence back, a couple of feet back. That seemed to be what they preferred.
A fence at the, at the parking pad?
Yeah.
On the other side of the...
Behind the grasses.
Right.
So the grasses would be in front of the fence and then the fence.
Right.
And the fence would block the headlights.
Wouldn't go into the drainage field, the septic?
No, be way, way up.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment, though? Where that screening is along that driveway, where they, you know, go into the side, their driveway comes off of Blanchard Farms further out, so when they do come in, that screening only helps for once the car is in sideways and facing their garage. It's when they come in the way that driveway is constructed, they come in way off of Blanchard Farm and it swings in and that's where all those lights swing around. So just by providing those arborvitae or those grasses really didn't help with lighting because by, at that point, they're already turning straight into their garage. It's primarily maybe blocking cars when they're parked there, but now there's really no screening. So if you could go out, if you could look at the extent to which that driveway where those cars all come in it all the time, that, that's my one comment. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No.
You'd have to be on sight to see it, but...
Well, just explain it to me.
Actually, you know, on the plan here...
You've got the driveway right here, so...
There is no driveway on that, on that plan.
Just tell me what it looks like.
But as the car comes around, the cul-de-sac...
Okay, so this is...
There's the driveway. People come in and they...
They're starting to pull it, they come in and pull in here, so...
The lights are shining right at our house.
They have, they had arborvitae right here, but this was, by this point, they're already turned, going into their garage, so it's primarily, I'm just saying, they were to extend it out a little further right here.
What's the proposal for the fence? Do they have a width or a length?
They don't have a proposal. I mean, you'd be telling them what they need to do.
But it's going here? But it's going here?
That's where I assumed it would go.
So have they brought it out far enough?
I'm not even, I'm not sure the driveway is really as wide as is shown on that plan. I think it's narrower than that, but there was never anything going down the driveway. It was always just at the end of the driveway. That's the way this was discussed and I think maybe there's, you know, a point where everyone has really done what's reasonable for everyone to do.
But is there, so there is a plan for what they're going to do?
There isn't a plan. There are grass, there were arborvitae there, there are grasses there now and the plan that, you know, doesn't want to have anything to do with paying for it, which is another whole issue, but the plan that the property owner had was to use some fence that, I think there's some other fence maybe between your property and the one just before it coming down Whittier. There's like a, some kind of a white fence, like a white vinyl fence. Well, anyway, there's a fence like that that's visible from that driveway and he was willing to use that same fence at the end of that part of the driveway.
When you say use the fence, do you mean like, like look the same visual?
Install a piece of fence that would go across the bottom of the driveway so that headlights would be blocked. It's going to be downhill a foot or two from the driveway because it slopes off pretty quickly.
Right.
So, you know, it'd have to be, I was saying, four feet above the grade of the driveway.
To block lights.
To block lights well.
That's what I have to do.
So, so the idea is that they would put it in here somewhere?
It would be at the end of the driveway.
That's the garage.
I'm sorry, I'm in here.
Yeah. So you can see how it drops. That's quite a slope.
Yeah, but if it's high enough, it's high enough, right?
Yeah, I think it would go like across the whole width of, you know, that angle on the driveway. I think that's where you'd have to have it.
To start at the corner and go far enough out so when a car comes in, we're not on these lights shining at the back of our house.
No, here. I mean, to me, that's just a design thing, right? Somebody should be able to figure that out, right?
Well, that's, I mean, no one's really gotten, I mean, I think when you start having someone there like designing it, that's another whole, that's another whole step we haven't really thought about. He already has said he will not pay for this and that, you know, someone else is going to have to pay for it. He is the one who cut down the trees. I don't know, you know, who else really should pay for it.
Well, the other option is put the trees back up.
Wasn't that a condition, the accessory line?
This wasn't...
No, this is not the accessory line.
When they decided to put the driveway without permission, there wasn't any notice?
But that was a requirement of the planner?
That was something that we, that you all worked out with the builder, that they would put those arborvitae up because he had gotten a building permit based on a plan that was different.
That was in a written decision somewhere?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a written decision. It's on a, it's on several plans, it's on several as-built plans that you all, that you all required. And I think those plans were used with the building permit, so when he got the, you know, when they got the building permit, no, it would have been afterwards. Well, yeah, not quite sure when, but I did get an opinion from town council that where that plan is an official as-built plan, that the planning board has discussed and used and reviewed and so on, that there is some basis to ask that, you know, something be restored there where those arborvitae were on that plan.
It's either arborvitae or a fence, right?
Or you can use green giant, sort of...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have the arborvitae as long as it's...
And those are wide and they're tall.
Yeah, I kind of got that he didn't really like the look of the arborvitae.
I'm going to blame for that.
No, they're pretty ugly.
Or they could have extended this grading out so there was flatness along that side and they have a retaining wall. If his concern was he can't push snow over, you know, and so the fence had to be pushed back, but if you flatten that slope out a little bit further now with a retaining wall, then you can put arborvitae further out from him on his driveway, that would be, I don't know.
That'd make the rest of the slope even steeper, though.
Yeah, and then you're changing the calculus.
You're starting to move into drainage areas.
And then you're getting drainage and more water and it just opens a whole can of worms.
The challenge would be, let's figure out if we can get the screening in place with what we got.
That's all.
That's the challenge. And I would go back, I would go back to the homeowner and say, you know, we've got two options, right? One is to replant those that left with something you like, but that provides screening.
Grasses don't.
You have, you have a motion.
Oh, my God.
It's getting a little bit late. Who wants to come up?
Give it to him.
What am I doing here?
If there's something you want to change, two, three...
I move that the planning board finds that the orientation of the driveway on lot eight allows headlight glare to spill onto the property at 30 Whittier Drive, where it is an annoyance to the neighbors. This was discussed in depth at the planning board meetings on 5/4/2017 and at other times and was proposed to be mitigated by a requirement for arborvitae. These arborvitae were shown on multiple as-built plans with the issuance of occupancy permits and for review of grading. The arborvitae were removed without notice to the town or the neighbors. I move to find that the arborvitae were necessary mitigation required by the town and that the owner of lot eight is responsible for either replacing them or substituting a solid fence of a minimum of four feet above the elevation of the driveway turnaround, across the width of the turnaround. This work shall be completed within three weeks or the planning board may pursue the issuance of fines in accordance with the Town of Situate noncriminal disposition by law.
Is three weeks? The only modification, well, there's two things. Three weeks is probably not enough time.
I mean, I actually just ordered a fence or we did a trellis and, I mean, it takes way longer than three weeks.
Do you want to change it to six?
Yeah, go to six.
Six weeks.
The other thing I would say is that they don't have to go back with arborvitae, but they could propose a different kind of screening.
Right. It can't be ornamental grasses.
Can't be deciduous, you know, it can't be... Can't be deciduous, you know, it can't be deciduous that goes away.
Has to be evergreen.
Right. But they could just come and propose that as an alternative.
All right.
Not lined up like sentence.
Can you add that it shall extend beyond the driveway to block when they're turning in?
Yeah, if you guys could just...
What did you say there?
What?
It doesn't say that because that was never part of this before.
Never part of it, ever.
That's to screen lights, and that, it never screened lights ever. Even when our arborvitae were up there, it never screened lights. That's what you people all decided without any of, none of, we didn't want that.
We didn't have a say in this.
We didn't have a say. So we never, even when they grow to full height, they were never going to screen lights. It wasn't far enough out, is what we're saying. And I just think if you took a look at it on site to see what we see every day, it would help you. That's all.
What is, what did we say?
Um, I don't know.
About that lights.
Would you like me to draft something and submit it?
No.
All right.
We could say a solid fence of a minimum of four feet above the elevation of the driveway.
And we can just modify this to say, to block light, block the nuisance light onto 30 Whittier Drive, right? And that leaves it as, they've got to do what they've got to do.
Because what, the width of the turnaround is the, what would you call the turnaround?
Across the whole farm of the driveway, yeah.
Like if they extended it maybe two feet?
Or even four feet, but it's, it never, it never, it never was going to screen headlights ever at the, at the point where he planted them. It screened a car. It would screen a car. You'd still see the car, but their car would be parallel with the bushes after his lights have turned and faced us. And then he goes in, but at that point, his lights are on his garage door. I'm just saying, when they come in from Blanchard Farm, that's the main, he has to travel in a little, you know, a little ways like this, facing right at us, right out of the living room.
Right.
Until he starts to turn into his garage, then the bushes are there. But that point in which he turns in is further out than that arborvitae's ever went. So if you extended the arborvitae or a fence, it would help when he first comes in with those headlights.
So why don't we just add, and, you know, that it will, a solid fence of a minimum of four feet above the elevation of driveway turnaround across the width of the turnaround, and such additional width to fully screen headlights to 30 Whittier Drive.
I think that's got it.
How about that?
Well, second is modified.
That seems reasonable.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion collector.
All right. And Laura, you'll notify the homeowners on it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. What do we got left? Form A. That's why Greg's still hanging around. Magic board is just flipping around.
Yeah, just looking around.
Okay.
We covered you. Yep. This is a Form A plan located at 147 and 149 Thomas Clapp Road. You'll see the building on the front. Lot one is number 147. It's an existing 46,000 square foot lot. We're proposing to cut 5,340 square feet out of the back, located as parcel A, and combine it with lot two, which is a building 149 Clapp Road out back. Both lots are left with required area. This is in the R1 zoning district. Lot one is left with 40,678. Lot two has 92,900. Lot two was created as a 50-foot frontage lot. There's a special permit in place, so we're only adding area to it. Lot one is fully compliant with frontage on Clapp Road and compliant with the lot area.
So lot two couldn't be sort of split, the two houses go back and...
No, it's part of the special permit. It's required that it can't be further divided, so.
And what was the purpose of this? Just to kind of like straighten up the lot lines, or?
The lot lines here were a little funky when you went out there on the ground. Lot two was actually maintaining parcel A as part of their front lawn. We staked it out, and everyone realized where the line was, and they were able to work in agreement and convey, so.
Life is good, and no one's...
They're going to own their front lawn now.
Couldn't just take it for sad virgin possession?
All right. Do we have a motion? Oh, my goodness. It's getting late. "I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in Situate, Mass. showing a division of parcel 24-2-29 and 24-2-29A, 147 and 149 Thomas Clapp Road by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., dated 6/15/17. As the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line, which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning bylaw."
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hi, Greg.
Good night.
Okay.
Now you can go.
Anything we absolutely need to do here? One bill? Bar corner.
Thank you. "Move to pay $390 to Merrill Corporation, Lot 1 Otis Place Construction Inspections."
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we all have to sign this?
Three. Oh, you did?
No, no, I mean the bill.
Oh, no, just you.
Oh, just me.
Just you.
Okay. Can we dispense with minutes?
We don't have any minutes.
We don't have any minutes, okay. Anything else at this point?
No.
Entain Bill's motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Word adjourned.